In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk presented in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'll call this January 28 council meeting to order. I'd like for us to all stand for a moment of silence, and then after a moment of silence, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I be seated? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a presentation regarding our lakefront aquatic vegetation removal project.
Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. I just wanted to come back in front of the city council and give you an update on the removal of the aquatic vegetation down at the lakefront. As you know, we started this process, actually, the drawdown process started back in October. We started our, along the lakefront area back in, back in March. We actually sprayed. We were supposed to do the burning in March as well. After we did the spraying, COVID came. We weren't able to spray until the end of June, which was not, we didn't get the desired effect we wanted. We were allowed, per our permit, to clear 56 acres of certain vegetation at the lakefront. And you could see on your map, 40 acres on the west side, 16 acres on the east side. Phase three of the aquatic vegetation project was the mechanical remover. We started that, we started that project in October, and we finished it the end of December This is a picture taken of the west side of the lakefront, so west of the beach area, headed towards Mississippi. This is actually during the burning process in June of 2020. This one is roughly the same picture. This is December 2020, after the mechanical removal of the vegetation on the east side. I'm sorry. So this is the before picture. This is the after picture. Sorry, I tried to put them side by side, but the pictures got so small, it was hard to see. This is the west side of June of 2020 during the burning process. This is the west side afterwards. Again, before and after. This is the end of December 2020. Per our permit that we have through Fish, Florida Fish and Wildlife, these are the aquatic vegetation that we are allowed to remove per our permit. If you look at the bottom pictures underneath wax myrtle, that is a typical looking wax myrtle that you, that you might see out in the, in the lake, and also the, underneath the red maple, that is, those two are the woodier, taller, bushier, that look like trees that were growing in the lake. Those were, we were allowed to remove some of those as long as the caliper was four inches or less. Some of the conditions and provisions of our aquatic permit, now, these are just some that you would be concerned, if you want a whole list of them, I can. We modified our permit to remove this lakefront vegetation. They amended our permit, but we were only allowed to clear as much of the aquatic vegetation a single time during the drawdown, and that we have to allow to regrow, the plants have to be allowed to regrow. We were allowed to move, remove the entire plant, including the roots, as long as we didn't disturb the sediment, the wax myrtles and red maples, as long as the trunk diameter, again, was greater than, I'm sorry, was greater than four inches, they, they were also able to be removed. And just so you know, that some of the reasons that the aquatic vegetation, some of it does serve a valuable purpose within the lake, the submerged vegetation, which grows primarily underneath or below the water, provides habitat for the fish and wildlife, affects the nutrient cycles, increases the water clarity, and stabilizes the shoreline and sediment. The immersed plants, which were rooted in the water, but stems and leaves grow above the water, they provide habitat for the wildlife, provide food for the waterfowl, and reduce shoreline erosion. So not all vegetation is necessarily bad. It does serve a purpose within our lake. I'm here if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, Ms. Holcamp. Yes. I was told Mr. Ed Harris was going to be at the meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ed Harris with Florida Fish and Wildlife is also here if you had any specific questions.
I do, have one for him.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Harris, would you come forward?
Good evening. For the record, I am Ed Harris with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, it's recently come to my attention, the state of Lake Runnymede, and how the vegetation and sediment has basically just been filling the lake up, and it's no longer really a usable lake. Is there any plan for FWC to pick this lake back up and make it a usable lake? I mean, I just look at our lakes in our community, and it's a limited resource that we have, so to me, it's a shame that this, this is basically becoming a marsh. Is there any plans to resurrect it?
Not at this time. We do not have access for our crews to get into that lake to do the management. We had been doing it until just a few years ago, at which point we lost our, our access point. We cannot get the, the equipment underneath the Rommel Road, or through the Rommel Road culvert. So as long as we have no access to the lake for our contractors, we can't do the work.
So my understanding is that Osceola County is willing to build FWC boat access through the county's park on the Lake Runnymede side of Rommel Road? So if that happens, if the county does construct that lake access, would FWC pick it back up?
Again, not at this time. The contractors and the contract we have in place have specific requirements for liability, and the contractor will only use a public ramp. They don't want to accept a liability for anything that is not open to the public. And as long as we're using that contractor, and we did have the conversations with them, whether or not a city or a county-owned piece of property that was not open to public use still met the, the criteria of being a public facility, but as far as our contracts and the attorneys and the liabilities are concerned, they cannot use it.
That's, I'm going to look at Mr. Manzares for this. That seems odd to me, because as long as it's a safe boat access, I don't know why it would matter if it's public or private, as far as liability would go.
That's a question I cannot answer. That is a question that came from attorneys with the South Florida Water Management District, who was our contractor, and FWC in Tallahassee. And I would refer all those questions to our Officer General Counsel.
So we did discuss this in our, in our workshop last week. I brought this up as one of our legislative priorities for the City of St. Cloud, to resurrect this lake and to get it taken care of and make it a usable water body again. So we, I believe we're moving forward with that as a legislative priority. Also, I reached out to the Family Boating Association, and they're in support of cleaning up Lake Runnymede. The president sent me an email and said that, you know, the, the Family Boating Association is in support, and we have a representative here tonight from Representative Hawkins' office that was going to come up and read a statement that, that he has written in support of this issue.
Do you have any other questions for him?
I don't.
Okay. You have a question for Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harris, the, down at the lakefront here, the cattails that we have now, are they permissive to be taken out?
In most cases, the cattails are, except in the, the special circumstances where we have snail kite nesting. Snail kites are an endangered species, and over the past few years, we have seen them nest more and more on East Lake Toho and occasionally on Lake Runnymede. And when snail kites are nesting, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service places a buffer in those areas, and no work can be done without their specific permission. So in general, the project that FWC did, and then the associated project that the city had undertaken, was to remove those very dense rank stands of cattail, and all the agencies support that, unless we do have the, the special circumstances with the kite nest.
Yes, sir, because I, I looked on the, on the internet, and I, I didn't find anything that said that you couldn't take them out, so, other than like what you're saying. And I, I would probably agree with you. Snails and all that stuff that they, when they're nesting, they've got to let them get to their, done and gone, I guess. And that was a question I had. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
All right, thank you very much.
The representative from Mr. Hawkins' office, if you please.
Is it Ian?
Come and share.
No. Bill, you want me to?
Do what?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, hang on one second. Could you take the, show the pictures that I've got?
Yes, sir. Jay, can you show the pictures?
I'm going to jump around here. This is one of my property that I have at Alligator Lake, and I had some aquatic weed removal, and I want to take some.
Excuse you, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
Let me get Jay to put those pictures up.
Go ahead.
He's doing it, and I see him walking back there.
These are some pictures that were taken on my property here, and this is just some of the portions that they've taken out. They've got the equipment that cleans it, I mean, when it's done, it's clean. And they take the debris and they haul it off. They have a barge, and they put it on a barge, and they take it back to the landfill and get rid of it. So it, it does clean up the property, makes it look nice. Could do the same thing at the lakefront here, what, if you could show some other, I think there's other pictures there. Jay?
Is that all you got?
Okay, just the three. But they have a cutter that goes down underneath the sand, and it cuts, I mean, cuts everything. So the vegetation is, you know, it's gone, and doesn't, it would be years before it would come back again. And citizens down in the lakefront, I think they would be very appreciative to see it getting cleaned up to what it used to be 20 or 25 years ago. And it used to be that clean. So, I mean, I had weeds, if you look to the left, and that's what I had at one time. Now I've got absolutely, it's clear, clean. So that was one of my comments, and I would hope that maybe the city manager, that we could ask him to, if the council would agree with this, that we could go and get a little bit cleaner at the lakefront and out there at Chisen Park, a little bit cleaner than what it is now, especially all of the burned, it's still there, and it, and it looks, looks terrible. I mean, it, it looks better than what it was from the pictures, but it could be 100% better than what it is now. So the council would ask the city manager if we can, next meeting, that we could come up with a cost analysis and see what it would cost us.
Does the council have any questions or comments in support of that item?
I, I'm fine looking into it. I thought we did everything we could under the permit before with the scrape and burn. I didn't think private homeowners could do.
Or you can get it this clean.
Yeah, but private homeowners can do something different than.
Yes.
What we can do.
Not necessarily.
Well, I support looking into it as well. I'm under the same impression as Mr. Trace is, but I'd, I'd be open for.
Could we ask Mr. Harris if, if we can do more work, if our permit will allow that?
Sorry, Michaela.
It's okay.
Hold on, hold on, Michaela. Mr. Harris?
I'm sorry.
Is this something you could speak to?
The current condition of the lakefront, the, the work that's been done there, is about the maximum that can be allowed under a permit. That the idea is, you know, not to do a, a clearing to that extent, and, you know, a permit is required for that scope of work, that's issued to the individual property owners. An individual property owner is not allowed to have their entire lakefront devoid of vegetation. They're allowed to have an access area to get in and out, and the rest of the shoreline either has to leave the vegetation in place, or take out the nuisance of the non-native plants and replace it with native vegetation. And what's happening along the city's lakefront on East Lake is the majority of the nuisance and the non-native vegetation has been taking, been taken out, and can continue to be maintained clear, but the more beneficial native vegetation is required to be left in place. And even though cattails are a native plant, we generally view those as being less desirable than something like bulrushes, or some of the flowering plants that are down there. The submerged vegetation, other than hydrilla, is also very desirable, and want to see that left in place. I know some of the questions have revolved around wax myrtles and red maples, some of the, the taller trees and the shrubs. Those are also a very important part of the, the lake system, and they're required to be left in place unless they're exceptionally small, and those have already been taken out, as Ms. Holcamp had discussed previously. But the, the larger trees serve a purpose for, not fish, but the other wildlife, and we do require those to be left in place.
But last question is, if it, what is already burned there, could we clean up the burn, I don't know what you'd call it, the leftover burned, cattails or whatever did burn, could we take that out?
Yes, anything that's been burned, you know, the stumps that are out there, dead plants that have fallen over or been blown up in the wind.
There's a lot.
Yeah, those, those can be taken out.
There's a lot.
What I was referring to were just, you know, the standing trees that were left in place after the first couple of rounds of work, but what you're describing is no problem at all.
Okay. And a portion of, there, there are some of the, at the lakefront where the swimming area there, it's, the, some of the weeds are coming towards, from the east to the west, that are, they're taking over a third of it already, right now, where the swimming hole. And so that is, I, I guess they could clean that up.
Yes, and I'd be happy to arrange a meeting with Ms. Holcamp and the city's contractors and look at these specific sites, compare them with the, the permit conditions, and make sure that everybody's on the same page, and then go ahead and get the, that cleanup finished.
Yeah, that would, that would make it look a whole lot better than, it, it looks like it's a third of the cleaned up, you know, done, but it's not 100% what it should have.
Mm-hmm.
So I appreciate your working with the city and trying to get it done.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Are there any objections from the council for the city manager following up.
No.
With Mr. Harris and.
See whatever you can get cleaned up.
Ms. Holcamp on this request. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you please state your name and.
Hi, I'm Michaela. I'm here on behalf of Representative Fred Hawkins. I just wanted to add a little statement to the record, per your request. So this is about Lake Runnymede. Representative Hawkins wants everyone to know that he's in full support behind the City of St. Cloud's legislative priority to maintain and preserve Lake Runnymede. We do understand that the health of the lake directly impacts the surrounding area and the people who live near it, both in quality of life and economically. The natural resources of St. Cloud are an important attraction as we maintain and as well as we draw more people and more businesses to the city. Representative Hawkins is disappointed that it appears that FWC is slowly retracting their support and involvement in the preservation of this lake, and he wants everyone to know that he intends to use his position to urge FWC to return to the lake. The mission of FWC is to manage our fish and our wildlife resources for their long-term well-being and the benefit of the people. Representative Hawkins believes in the importance of this mission, and he hopes to see it carried out to its fullest extent in Lake Runnymede. We're very grateful to the Fish and Wildlife Commission for the important work that they do to preserve our natural and our most beautiful resources, and now we are looking to them to increase their support and involvement in our lake. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to the assistance from Mr. Hawkins in regard to that. That would be awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Michaela.
So to, to continue your comment about the public boat ramp, is that something, we send a letter of support to the county to try to get a, a public boat ramp in Lake Runnymede?
Well, you know, I guess that's a legal interpretation. I don't know why it would matter if it's public or private. If it's, if it's a boat ramp that provides access and it's safe and usable, like, I don't know why there would be more liability. I'll let the attorneys fight that out, but, I mean, we can send a letter of support to the county if we think that would be helpful.
How do we get the ball, ball rolling, I guess?
Right, right, yeah.
They're already, they're already doing it, so.
Okay. So follow up with a letter, then?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd love Mr. Manzares to read this interpretation that they're making, too, on public versus private.
Well, I'm assuming that, in generally speaking, that as lawyers tend to be conservative to avoid additional risk for their clients, that the difference is related to the amount of people utilizing the ramp versus public versus private, and of course, the more activity you have, the greater the liability. That's my general assumption of it all. Certainly could reach out to the General Counsel to try to get a little better understanding of where they are with it, and we can do that.
But that's opposite of what Mr. Harris said, though. They want it to be public. They won't use a private one. I believe that's what Mr. Harris said.
Okay.
So that's why it doesn't make any sense.
Okay, well, let me, let me, we can, we can try to figure out some more information about that, and I'll get back to you on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Councilmember Matheny?
No, thank you.
This time, we'll have a presentation by the Education Foundation regarding our scholarship program.
I am Carrie Avery. I'm the Executive Director of the Education Foundation, and Leanne Albertini, our Scholarship Manager, is here with me this evening. We came tonight to report out on your scholarship program and get final approval of proposed amendments to the current agreement. I think we do have, yeah, okay, thank you. PowerPoint presentation for you. First, I'd just like to say it's a pleasure to work with you all. I have enjoyed getting to know you all better, and our city manager, as well as your staff, and all the input that you provided to us for the following updates. The city changes the lives of its residents and, and improves their future with the opportunity of a higher education, and we're very proud to be your partners in this endeavor. If you'll refer to the PowerPoint presentation, we're going to go over the 2020 scholarship report first. As you can see, your endowment balance as of December 31st, 2020, was $860,094. Currently, you're investing $26,000 annually into the scholarship program. With, and that constitutes into $2,000 scholarships that are awarded to eligible students residing in the city limits of St. Cloud. We give, per our agreement, five Valencia College scholarships that are provided through the endowment, and five any accredited post-secondary institution scholarships, as well as three adult students who are allowed to attend any post-secondary education institution, for a total of 13 scholarships. Unfortunately, as you all are aware, due to pandemic, we were unable to have our 2020 scholarship awards in the traditional ceremonial fashion. However, we were able to host a Facebook Live and honor all of our donors and recipients. We included the photos of your 13 recipients. First, you'll see our 2020, the City of St. Cloud Student Scholarship recipients. They were Abigail Albuzi, Emily Godfrey, Sarah Taylor, Morgan Motrell, Madison Meeks, Christopher Callahan, Giselle Carbello, Nicole Hernandez, Casey Walsh, and Audrey Will, Audrey Andrews. Congratulations to all those recipients. The next slide is your adult scholarship recipients, which were Crystal Cologne Rosato, Ty Hoyle, and Sierra Imberg. Congratulations to those as well. As far as the proposed discussion, amendments to our agreement, 2005 agreement between the City of St. Cloud and the Education Foundation. We would like to propose that the criteria amendments be as follows, that the scholarships be issued to City of St. Cloud residents, graduating seniors and adults. Currently, it just says St. Cloud High School students, and I know there's been some changes to the students being out-of-zoned and having choice schools, so we wanted to be able to, to correct the, the terminology that's listed in the amend, or in the criteria, as well as outside of general focus, scholarships focusing on first responders, technical and trade, fine and performing arts, and advanced veterinary factoring program that's recently come to Valencia. In addition to that, scholarship, the scholarship funds currently are not, is not listed in the current criteria, what the funds will be, what will be done with the funds, if there are any unused funds or returned funds. The council usually votes to reinvest them in the endowment, but that's not currently specified. And then kind of to give you a side-by-side comparison as far as how the current agreement lays out. Cash investment is $26,000 a year, as we mentioned. We'd like to continue with that proposed investment. $16,000 of the 26 goes to eight $2,000 scholarships to the accredited post-secondary institution of your chosen scholarship recipients. The balance, the $10,000 is currently vested in Valencia Endowment, but we're proposing that it be vested in the Central Florida Foundation Endowment, which allows for scholarships to go to any accredited post-secondary education institution. Currently, we would also like to discuss the general funds through the Valencia Endowment. You're generating five $2,000 scholarships that are awarded out of the endowment, but as you can see from your current investment cycle, awards generate about $20,000 a year, and in some cases, up to about $25,000. So we would like to advise that you award all of the funds that are generated through your current endowment annually. And I think that kind of sums it up, so I would like to open for discussion or comments. And thank you very much, Bill, for helping us work through all this process.
Thank you. We're very excited about the way that this endowment was set up to help a lot of students.
Yes, most of them.
Do we have any questions or comments at this point? Could we, do we have a consensus that we asked the city attorney and the city staff to take a look at this recommendation and come back with a proposal that supports this, support of what has been proposed to us here in our next, in an upcoming council meeting? Would that be acceptable?
Well, if it's up to, the direction from the council is that we work to amend the existing agreement and move forward, then we certainly can do that.
Are there any objections? Are there any objections to that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we have a presentation by the Economic Development Division regarding quarterly economic development report.
My name is Antoinette Forbes. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of St. Cloud. My intention is to give you a brief snapshot of some of the economic development activities we've been doing for the past quarter, if I can work this thing. Perfect. So, we are looking at the quarter of October through December of last year. There were 116 new business registrations and 42 cases of business assistance. And when we talk about business assistance, that is us as staff reaching out to businesses specifically and saying, how exactly can we help you? We've had an increase of those cases, particularly because of COVID, and so now we've had a lot more businesses who are very receptive when we call and tell us exactly what they need. And we've been able to either offer them direct assistance or been able to refer them to other cases, particularly in the case of financial assistance, where if the city's grant program does not offer them enough, for example, Osceola County has grant programs available that we refer them to. We should also note that in terms of new growth, you see the service industry sector was the largest by far. That was 44%. That includes your contractors, salons, gyms. It's very well-versed in terms of how businesses tend to self-qualify themselves. And then the next one will be professionals, that's your realtors, accountants, insurance agents, and such. I think it's also imperative to note that this time last year, we had a little over 1,300 registered businesses in the city. We currently have over 1,800 registered businesses in the city in one year. I usually do these presentations in two parts, one being business retention side and the other being business attraction. On the retention side, that's how we help our existing businesses grow and expand. So on this side, we did the Culinary Bicycle Tour. This was the fall addition, which allowed us to incorporate some new restaurants that weren't part of our initial one that was done in February of last year. We had a total of 12 restaurant stops and 50 participants. We also performed our annual business survey, and this is when we survey our existing businesses to find out more information about them, particularly from demographic perspective. How many employees do they, how many employees do they employ? What are their anticipated revenues? Do they see themselves growing? Do they intend to have a change in top management staff? That way, we can alter or adjust our programming to accommodate for that. We also did a gift card giveaway, which was in December, and that was to encourage businesses to participate in that survey. And so we offered gift cards to some of our local downtown restaurants for people who chose to participate. We did our third edition of Business Walks, which have gone virtual now because of COVID, and it's where staff now incorporates our resource providers. That is the SBDC, that is the UCF Business Incubator, that is SCORE, that is Career Source. So there's about 20 different agencies. Not everyone can attend at one time, but they're all part of the process. And we do one-on-ones with business owners to find out how we can help. We usually try to go with what we call our larger employers. So for St. Cloud, that's usually between 10 to 20 employees. We also participated in Shop Small Saturday, where we did video interviews with six of our businesses and posted them on social media to encourage people to shop local. Also on the business retention side, we continued our relationship with the county in the "We've Opened Safely" campaign. So we find out from them new programs that they have available, and we also share with them our programming so that we can offer our businesses a well-rounded approach in offering them business assistance. At this point, the county has reported 71 grants to St. Cloud businesses, and that's as of November, 24th of November last year. We also launched our Growth Wheel Program, which is a technical assistance program that offers businesses one-on-one counseling and helps them pivot in the time of COVID for different product inventions or different operation cycles to help them learn how to not just sustain, but hopefully flourish even during a pandemic and beyond such. Also, we continued our COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan. And if you recall, the Phase 1 was direct grants. So at this point, we have issued 56 businesses, an average award of $4,300. We're almost at the tail end of funding $241,500, and we've helped retain 344 jobs. We've continued with our Special Alerts Program, which is real-time information to businesses as programs become available, because at this point, when we're talking about free money, time is of the essence and business needs to know so they can apply and receive that funding before it runs out. Which, as a side note, I was just informed by the SBA today that they intend to offer a grant program for vacated venues, shuttered venues program, which is basically your movie theaters, your playhouses, ones that have been forced to close and not fully reopen. They are offering direct grants. It's coming soon, though, but it's not officially open yet. We, I've also worked with the CDBG program to draft the Outdoor Downy Furniture Grant, as well as the Business Rental Assistance Program. Onto the business attraction side. So, we have engaged with CGC Consulting on a hotel feasibility study. The study addresses the current and projected market demand analysis on the number, type, and duration of hotel stays in the city, as well as offering a competitive analysis on what new hotel facility must do to provide a unique alternative to the current lodging stock and be successful. It includes the economic feasibility analysis and pro forma, and the analysis will identify at least two sites, either public or private, that will be an optimal location for future development of the said hotel. At this point, they have conducted their market demand analysis. They're at 90%, and they have done their initial fieldwork and project orientation. On the business attraction side, the Makinson Building, which most people, if they've gone through downtown, have seen the transformation. We've also had eight leads. Leads would be interests from site selectors, realtors, investors, looking to do larger-scale projects. We get them from our relationship through the county, well, through Enterprise Florida, through our relationship with the county, and we also have direct leads through our own marketing efforts. Also, and I think I mentioned it previously, that we had, just in the month of, three months between October and December, about 160 new businesses that came about. These are just some of the businesses that are new during that quarter. One example would be the Old Fashioned Cigar, which is at downtown, as well as Brim and Boho are both new to downtown. So our goals for next quarter, we are still working on performing updates to our websites, something that looks a lot more clean and easy in terms of user-friendliness. Our Business Climate Survey will be finalized and posted. We are working on developing a plan to leverage our opportunity zones, as well as rescheduling the Economic Summit, which hopefully, as we come to some normalcy, we'll be able to actually invite people and include site tours as part of it. You know, that's a big component, to be able to show what assets we have available. Also, in terms of events, we have one live event and one webinar. The webinar is on exportation, trade, sales, and marketing. This is to help some of our existing businesses learn how they can export to outside foreign countries, and they have several government assistance programs to help with that. That is scheduled for February 16th. And then our Entrepreneur Speed Dating Event, which will take place, is a live event, and they are done with social distancing in mind, in one-hour segments on February 16th. So that is the summation of what's been happening and what is to come. I am available for any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Lots going on. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I just, I just want to, I think you kind of touched on it, but I just want to ask the question directly. I mean, when you're doing all the reaching out to businesses, I mean, we're reaching out to all the business in the City of St. Cloud. We're not just looking at the downtown, right? We're reaching out to everyone. It's the same opportunities for everyone, not just...
Correct. So when we reach out to businesses, it's really a get-to-know-you session. It's, tell me about your business, and then we find ways that we can help them, whether it's financial or technical or simply referrals. It's not just subjugated to downtown, but all businesses as a whole. Now, of course, with a very limited staff, you know, we are going through geographically segment by segment, but we do, it is our intention to make it through the entire city, and including follow-up after that. Okay, now that we've given you this information, have you used it? And then how we can move forward from there.
Okay.
Any other? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Forbes, for your leadership, and appreciate all that you're doing. The next portion of tonight's meeting is our Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item out of this agenda is provided this opportunity to address to the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical after the person addresses the council. We ask that you please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and that you leave your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone here that is wanting to speak during the Citizens Forum? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Salvatore Cantello. As some of you know, I don't really know where to start off on the topic. Code enforcement. I believe that's the topic that I had that was on mine. It's continuously been an issue, not just for something that's going to be coming up later, but for the harassment. And I say that very lightly, that they've continuously bothered not only small businesses with certain little things, but also with the situation that you guys will address later, such as the food truck situation. I've seen it firsthand, just two days ago, and it bothered me a lot for the fact of the rudeness that was used by one of the code enforcement officers, when one day was basically explained of a situation of a table that was explained to one of the food trucks. And in the situation, it was explained that he just needed to mount the table to the back of his vehicle, and then that was it. He complied, and the very next day, as, mind you, this is only five feet from my job, so I go right there for lunch. And the very next day, code enforcement was back over with this gentleman again, this time explaining, that's not what I said, when, as you already have heard me say, that the, she explained that the table needed to be mounted to the back of the truck. And then this time, that's not what I said, is how it was explained to him again. Of course, being upset, and of course, I'm sure you can understand his situation as well as mine, but then when I said, that's not what you told him, and I believe I had the right to say something on the topic. When I did, it was basically explained that, sir, you weren't here, you don't know what you're talking about. Mind your business. I've been a part of this community since 2004, and in any situation, I believe that is my business. I mean, the man's just trying to make a living. And to sit there and call not only that, you know, to basically make it harder for him, but to also call one of your own citizens basically a liar, when I was there, was just wrong. And this is just a situation that I wanted to address to you all, that it is a problem, that they do sometimes overstep, and they go too far. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, and I'm sure Mr. Sturgeon has taken note of that, and we encourage you to address that issue.
So I just have a question, kind of following up with that. What is the correct communication channel when, you know, those code enforcement actions happen? Is it like a coaching session, or is it a formal letter goes out, 10 days to respond, this and that?
Typically, the code enforcement officers, when they notice any violation, approach the respondent, the owner of the property, or whoever's in control of the area where the violation exists. Usually verbally, usually in an initial meeting, usually they provide a verbal courtesy notice about that and tell them, and point out the violation, and they do discuss what needs to be done to come into compliance, to correct the violation. That is typically how it's handled, the courtesy notice, and then if compliance isn't met, then it escalates to the next level, which is providing a formal notice that they need to come into compliance, a formal written notice. If they don't come into compliance, then another notice goes out saying where the matter needs to be brought before the special magistrate to address it. But all along that process, the code enforcement staff are working with most respondents to try to get them to come into compliance.
And then is, when something's witnessed, is the, like, actual code given to them? Because like, I don't have the code memorized. I have to pull it up, you know, a lot of times, and especially because it changes. But we read code all the time because we see it, we see the changes. How is that communicated, I guess?
Well, in the, in the formal written notices, the codes are included in those notices as part of the written notices. Whether they are during the verbal discussion and the initial courtesy notice, I do not know.
Would it help to, in those situations, be able to hand a sheet of paper that says what the code is?
And it probably would help in the instance where the code is pretty black and white. But as you know, and as we'll talk about later, the example that was referred to, that's a very gray issue at this point.
Yeah. And do we have printers in the code enforcement vehicles to be able to, can we get printers in the vehicles to be able to just give someone exactly what the code says in those instances? Because, I mean, police vehicles, fire vehicles, they all have onboard printers, right?
That's correct. And I think that's a great idea. I think just get council consensus will do that.
Okay. I mean, I just like those little thermal printers that you can just print out, you know, the 20 lines of code that, you know, whatever that instance is. I just think it would help to, you know...
Clarify.
If you get approached by someone with blinking lights on the vehicle, right? Your heart rate goes up, you're not thinking, right? You know, five minutes after the conversation, you almost forget what was said, right? So having something that can just say, hey, this is what I got to do to remedy the issue, even if it's on a formal notice, just something that you can go look back at later.
Yeah, I wouldn't support that.
So you're, are there any objections? I don't think there's any objections.
And Bill, you and I had talked earlier this afternoon...
We did talk about that.
About the same thing, of getting it in print and give it to them exactly that minute. Don't, don't come back to that five days later and say, well, now it's not going to allowable because you can't put the seats on the, on the food tray, but now, five days before, you could. So, I mean, which way it is? It can only be one way or the other. You can't have no seating at all, or you can have seating along that's mounted on the truck, you know? So, I mean, I look at it, and I say, make it black and white. You get it right, there's not going to be a question. So I appreciate if you can do that.
Yeah, it's a great idea for clarification, and we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
Well, I'm telling you, code enforcement, that's a job I certainly would not want to have, but I certainly believe it's the expectation of our council, is that whoever is in charge of an issue with code enforcement with the public, we expect them to be treated graciously, even if they aren't getting a good response, in their opinion. But I believe we expect that.
The next portion of our agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Mr. Sturgeon, I believe you have an item you want...
Yes, sir. Item G, I'd like to pull that for a future workshop with council.
Okay. Item G is pulled for a future workshop?
And I spoke to the attorney on that Scrivenger's area, because it's in consent agenda, it's a moot point, so. The rest of it's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items that the council, Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull F, as in Frank, and, for discussion, and H, for discussion. I'd like to pull F, as in Frank, and for discussion, and H for discussion.
Anyone else? At that, we'll go to item F, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk to the fellow councilmembers here and just see if we really think we need to move forward with constructing this driveway. I know it's been brought up by multiple councilmembers over my time up here. I just don't really see the value of constructing it, because what if, you know, we sell the parcels in a different order and then we end up having to tear it out, you know? There is a 40-foot access drainage and utility easement between all four of the lots, so there is access provided to all the lots. And I, to me, I just think like, if it became a condition of a sale, then let's do it. But to me, I just don't feel like this is a really good use of dollars right now, because it might not be the right decision, and we might end up ripping it out. Additionally, I had asked during my agenda review about vacating the ingress egress easement that I brought up, it's been a long time, that runs through lots one and two on the north side. And to me, that's more restrictive to someone wanting to buy the property, because it's got this easement that runs through lots one and two, that, you know, people look at it and they're like, "How do I develop this property? It's got this easement." My understanding is that is coming soon. Mr. Sturgeon, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That is coming soon to us to vacate that ingress egress. But to me, I just need some convincing, I guess, some really good reasoning why we should move forward with this expenditure to build the driveway connection that may or may not be helpful in the future. And I'd like to vote on this one separately.
All right. Any other comment on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that driveway was supposed to have been completed two or three years ago, maybe longer.
Yeah, it's been on the.
So, I don't know why it's never been done, why it's been sitting. You refresh my memory why it's not done. Mr. Sturgeon.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Or Dan, I'll put it on you if you don't know.
Well, as I recall, part of the reason why the asphalt, the pavement of the driveway wasn't done was because there was underground utility work being done that ultimately would be in the same location where the asphalt was. So, until that utility work was done, it would have been, it would have been a bad idea to put asphalt down and just tear it up to put the utility work down underneath it. So, that utility work was completed at the end of, I think in the fall of last year, and so that's why they're circling back on this asphalt piece now at this point. So, that's been part of the delay. Back to Councilwoman Matheny's point, I'm not sure whether the paved asphalt is a requisite requirement for the two properties that are currently under contract, which are lots two and five in the commercial park. We certainly can look at that. If the buyer is not necessarily interested in, I agree wholeheartedly with what Councilwoman Matheny is pointing out, it may be premature to do that. So, if, we certainly can look at that and get with that prospective buyer. It is part of the contract that this piece be done, but I'm not sure that's a requisite for the buyer.
Yeah, I'd like to find out that we absolutely need to expend this $108,000.
Would it not be acceptable just to pull it off the agenda and take it back to staff and take another look at it?
I'm fine with that.
Mayor, may I recognize, I just want to point out also that Joyce Development is, by contract, supposed to pay $50,000 of this amount.
But, Mr. Attorney, the biggest problem I see is we're gonna spend $40,000 or $50,000 of the city's money, and we're not gonna get it back. Is there any, have you looked and see if the bondsman, that we can get up that money back?
They're not gonna, they're not gonna give the city a portion of the money back on this. We've discussed it with them already, and I do not think they will do that.
So, it kind of sounds like we only got half the money to be able to build the property there, the drive-through there, and we've only picked up half the money from Joyce Development, and the balance is gonna be, I guess, the new development, the new people that are gonna buy these properties are gonna pay for that?
No, so the balance, the balance of that would, the road and the drive and the utilities were, part of the project were the benefit of the city system, as well as to promote the ability to market those lots. So, if, as Councilwoman Matheny pointed out, basically, the threshold issue is that the driveway might not be conducive to continuing to market these lots because of whatever the reasons are, then that would be a reason to not act on it. We certainly can try to look at it. One quick way to do it is to talk with the buyer of those two lots and see what they feel about it. They obviously know the business of developing the lots, and so they're very familiar with those lots. We can also talk with the listing broker on it and see how they feel, and we can bring this matter back before you at the next council meeting with that information.
But Dan, if it looks like we don't get it done, the roadway going in there, it's not a saleable parcel, that nobody wants to buy it. It doesn't look that well to me. I wouldn't, you know, if you want to buy something, it's, you know, platted and you need to get a road to get there. You want to drive a muddy road that's going in and out of there now?
Don't disagree, Mr. Sturgeon.
That's just a question. I'm just asking the other side of what Ms. Matheny's asking. I understand both sides, but at the same time, to be able to sell it, it doesn't seem like it's legitimate to want to pay any kind of money that we want to get out of there. Of course, we're not gonna take the money anyway. We're not, it's going to the bondsman, so, and that never touch it, I guess, but some way, shape, or form, it should get that road, that should have been put in there a year, two years ago.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I guess my point is, what if somebody comes in, I mean, all this property is still under city ownership, the deal falls through, somebody comes in and wants to buy all four parcels, then that driveway makes no sense. There is, there is access to all four properties in the way of an access drainage and utility easement, so they have access. I'm just, we don't know who's coming, how they want to configure the lots, what lots they want to buy. I just think it might be the right decision, it might be the wrong decision. I would err on the caution of not constructing it at this time. I'd like to find more information and find out what's happening with the sale.
But Dan, we've got the water and sewers already there, right? For all four of those parcels?
Yeah, as I understand.
And they're already laid out.
Utilities are all ready for those four.
And they are laid out into, subsequently, each one of those parcels has got water and sewer.
No, I don't think they're laid out, and I don't have the plans in front of me, but I doubt that they're laid out for each one of the four parcels. I believe there's lines that could ultimately be connected to by whoever develops, but the connection point would have to be, would be put in and built by the ultimate end user of the lot. And as Ms. Matheny pointed out, if you did sell all four lots, then there would just basically be one connection to the lot, to that line instead of four, and if they were all, so. So, we certainly, again, if we can get back more, we'd like to bring it back, obviously, the next council meeting, because we do, we obviously want to get this part of the, this part of the project completed. It's been, as Mr. Cooper pointed out, it's been around for a long time, and we'd like to get it done, so. Why don't, if it's okay with the council, we'll bring it back and we'll get with Mr. Sturgeon.
Any objections?
I have a question. I was under the impression, when we approved the contract for Lot 5, this was a condition to them closing on that lot.
It was, as well as the, as well as the utility piece. I guess my point is that I don't know how much the actual asphalt paving piece in this location is required by the buyer. The buyer might come back to us, that would, that's, Mr. Trace, that's gonna be my first contact, is gonna be with the buyer saying, "Is this, do you need this as part of your thing?" And if they say yes, then we'll be back in front of you saying they need this to sell it in two weeks. I don't have that answer for you tonight. I know the, obviously, the utility piece is obviously important to them, that's a big issue for them, so.
Okay, I thought this was cut and dry in the contract, but if it's not, can we talk to the broker about any person that brings a contract forward, they complete that work and make it as part of the, you know, price they're willing to pay? They can do the due diligence, figure out how much it's gonna cost to make these improvements, and then install it after closing?
Yeah, we could, or we could just sell it to them without the improvement being placed and let them deal with it.
Right. Well, but if they're not buying all four pieces, if we're left with something, we need to make sure that it's got paved access and all that, so.
I can try to get an answer to that one question, I think. Yeah, I have a question, is, can we have Joyce Development put some lime rock in there, or is it gonna turn into a muddy mess if this drags on for two, three months?
It's muddy.
Too late.
But I mean, they could go and top dress it with some lime rock or something. If we could talk to Joyce Development and do that, just because people drive back there to look at the lot.
Bill, have you got the $50,000 from John Joyce?
No, we haven't, we haven't got, no, so, I mean, but truthfully, Mr. Sturgeon, is, I really don't see this going any longer than two weeks, that you're gonna have to make a decision in two weeks.
Okay.
To get an answer to that question. I believe, and I don't, again, I don't, I believe that the buyers probably are wanting to continue with the condition, that's in the agreement, and have it have it in place.
You think they want to have that?
They, as Mr. Trace pointed out, it's specifically listed in the agreement, as long as a couple of other things. So, I don't see why they would not, unless they have a different plan that we're not aware of.
Is it Compton on 5?
Yes, sir. And Lot 2.
So, Section 13O, Romanate 2, internal drive, as a closing condition, internal drive servicing, service connecting drive aisle to the south of the property.
Have they purchased it yet?
No, it's still in their due diligence. This is one of the conditions to close, actually, is completing.
Right, so, why would we do it before they, why would we do it before they own it?
It's a condition to close, so this needs to be done.
So, when this is done, they're obligated to close.
Should have been already done. Are we gonna get the $50,000 from John Joyce right away?
Yes, sir.
Can you do it, like, pretty quick?
I had discussions with their attorneys yesterday afternoon, and we're on track to do it. We just, we were waiting, we were waiting for final action tonight so that we can confirm how we're gonna get it done, but they've agreed to pay the $50,000.
And technically, it doesn't say paved internal aisle.
Right, what is it, read it exactly?
Internal drive, service connecting drive aisle to the south of the property. No exhibit.
Right.
It's showing on the, but it's showing on the plans for the project as a paved.
But that our initial contract, when we did the utility work, didn't have the pavement in. I asked procurement department for that, and the contract did not have any paving, it was just utilities. So, obviously, there was a disconnect at that point.
Well, that's part of the reason why this is in front of you, because the pavement wasn't included as far to the original contract for the, with Cathcart, to do the utility work. Whether it's on the ultimate plans, construction plans for the project, I understood the pavement was, actually understood it was actually originally designed as a, as a fairly advanced road, and not just a drive, including curbing and some other things on it that we had to go back to the engineers and ask them to revise it. So, that's what the Compton builders folks were looking at when they entered into that contract.
And Bill, why did we go backwards and take the curb and guttering out of it that was in it to start with?
Because the cost was $160,000, and so, I went back and looked at the plans, and I said, "It's supposed to be a driveway, not a road," and it was designed as a road. Remember, the purpose of the design, and again, I didn't design it, I'm not an engineer, but it was essentially presumed that this, these would be four lots with shared parking and basically an internal drive that essentially went through the parking lots of the lots between the four lots. So, putting curbing in and all essentially would make it a road, which would impact the ability to have cross-access across the shared use areas for the parking lot. So, that was the original intent. We have had discussions, as you're aware, from a couple of years ago, where you had at least one offer at one point to buy all four lots, and use one use on it, so that obviously would have even been more impacted in the event we did put in a curbed, you know, road in there. So, again, we can get you more information, and hopefully we can get some of these questions answered.
So, and we probably already missed the advertising deadline, but can we have a DSD meeting next week or the week after to talk about this? I'm sure they're gonna want either the contract to go away or to renegotiate the contract if we're not.
They've already asked for an extension to the part of the, we need to work on an extension to address this particular issue. And so, we were planning on having issue, we're working on an offer, another offer for Traxx 8A at the corporate campus, which we were, we're hopefully beginning to have some more information on that next day or so. So, yes, we can have a meeting as quick as possible on the DSD to talk about this issue, as well as the offer for Traxx 8A.
Anything else?
I'd like to have a DSD meeting two weeks from now, unless we have one after that.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have a CRA meeting scheduled for the 4th at, it says 6 o'clock, I thought it said 5, but 6 o'clock. If you're so inclined, we could do a DSD meeting at 5:30. That'll work. Well, only, I don't think in 20-something years, I've never done this, but I have a pretty serious personal commitment that night.
Happy anniversary, I'm hoping.
Actually, it's actually the confirmation of my oldest grandson.
Congratulations. So, two weeks, because we gotta advertise and all that and get feedback from the buyers.
So, prior to the next council meeting, would that work, council? That would be the 11th? Yes, sir. Sure. 5:30 on the 11th. Okay, very good.
So, this item is pulled, we're gonna bring it back?
Yes, that item is pulled for further information and discussion.
Councilmember Matheny, item H.
Yeah, in the minutes that were included in our agenda package that they're asking to be approved tonight, the minutes from the workshop on October 14 has, sorry, my computer went to sleep there. The minutes for myself do not accurately reflect what was said in the meeting. In fact, it's opposite of what I said in the meeting. Mr. Manzares, you're saying I can't, we can't amend the minutes?
No, that's what I said, but when I looked at the transcript, and I told you I hadn't looked at the verbatim transcript, I looked at it, so it's a little confusing from what where staff pulled it out of the transcript, so I think at this point, if you can just give us an indication of what you thought you were saying then, because it's really, if you've read this.
I think it's clear.
You do? Okay, well then, let's clean it up right now.
So, if you all remember, I brought up at a workshop back in October, why are we giving discounts in the mobility fees to multifamily and townhomes? Remember, I brought that up? I said, "Why are we giving them discounts? We shouldn't be giving them discounts. They should be paying the same fees as single family. We all know the same number of people live in the multifamily and townhomes." That was my, that's my comment. In the minutes, it says, "I shared concerns regarding discounts given to townhomes and apartments and not to single-family homes." That's not what, that's opposite of what I said. I wanted us to stop giving discounts to multifamily and townhomes. So, and that was what we talked with the expert that was here that was updating our mobility fees. So, I just wanted to reflect that that is not.
So, in your, I'm sorry. So, are you okay with just deleting the wording and not to single-family homes?
Yes.
So, that would be your motion to approve the minutes with that item deleted?
So, do they revise this, or it just is reflected?
Well, they're not approved yet, so once, so they will be revised, and the approved version will be as you adopt, based on what you adopt tonight.
So, do, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes for the October 14 workshop to strike and not to single-family homes from page 192 of our agenda packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Cooper. Do we have a consensus? Can we just have a consensus on that?
Well, no, you'll need a vote on that item, and since you're talking about it individually, I'd ask for a vote on the, that, as well as the other minutes that are in your packet.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Now, Cooper, recall the role on that amendment.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Pass this 5-0.
Vote carries.
And that was all of H, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we done with the agenda at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I, Mr. Sturgeon, you and I talked about item D. I just have a bucket truck for the building department. I understand we need to spend the money, get money. I just have a bucket truck for the building department. I understand we need to spend the money, get money. You got so much money, we don't know what to do with it, and it has to be only spent for the building department, but I gave hard thoughts about that. You're gonna have to have two employees riding around that truck all the time. Just put them up on the first floor or second floor, and it's easier to carry a step ladder or a ladder up there, and one person goes up and he's done and back down. I mean, it's, I understand you need to spend the money, but you don't need, need to be throwing away. I'm not saying it's thrown away, but it's, to me, I, I, it's just a hard for me to chew this one up and swallow it for, you know, the inspection for the underlayment before the. I just, I just, it doesn't sit good for me, I'm sorry. Tell me there's a better way, a better reason or why, or something else that you can purchase other than a bucket truck, and two people are gonna have to be riding around in a bucket truck all the time. Of course, you tell me you're not gonna need it every day, so then it's gonna be used one day every two weeks. So, do we really need it then? That's where, that's where my question, do we need, really need it then? I'd rather spend, look for other avenues of where we could spend it quickly. Use it more wisely. I guess that's my question.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Yes, I'd like to have the building official and the public works director come up and address why we need this unit. And also, you know, it won't be two people going around. I said, we'd have to have a safety employee. When somebody's up in a bucket, you always have a ground person to watch for.
Ground, I understand it's two people who are gonna be there.
Hi, Bob Deathridge, Building Department Director. The, the purpose of the bucket truck is to maintain the cameras that are in the City Hall complex, as well as in association with the fusis program with the police department. So, there are not gonna be two building department people dedicated to this vehicle. It, it is going to be a shared use, but it is going to be to benefit the, the entire downtown campus.
Okay, I didn't see that, or nobody said that, or until I heard it just now, so.
Right.
I'm, I'm hearing something totally different that I never heard at the beginning, so.
Well, it, it was, it was brief in the description, but it, it did.
Yeah, I missed it.
Say that it was to augment the PD's fusis.
I didn't hear about the cameras, but that was just City Hall, and I thought that was through from the building department.
No, it, it's, it's for the entire downtown campus.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gendor?
Mr. Gendor, you need to speak to this also?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Maseem Gendor, Public Works Director. Just to kind of reiterate with what Mr. Deathridge said. We also used, like, for example, when we had the fire, the fire at the solid waste transfer station, and we had to do a initial inspection to ensure the safety of the station with the really high roofs, the building department brought over, you know, their current truck in order to ensure that the, and with one operator in order for us to be able to get up to the high, high areas. We also used it for the inspections of roofs as well. And the public works department's bucket truck is no longer operable, and we're choosing not to, to purchase one because we currently, the building department actually will have a joint-use truck for, for us, for the city to use. So, when we go off and take care of some maintenance of skull flashes and so forth, we know that we'll have a bucket truck in order to use that. So, it's a multi-use vehicle.
So, you, you'll be able to share it back and forth for?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Police and fire?
Yes, sir, we work very well with the building department. We request that, they bring over one operator, and we have our, we have our individuals who are also certified to utilize it, out there to utilize it.
Okay, so, as long as you're gonna share it back and forth to, other than one use, I don't have a problem.
Yes, sir, we always say please, and they comply.
Thank you, sir, just keep sharing. Thank you.
Thank you, Maseem. John Jones has requested to speak to item C on the consent agenda. John, would you just come forward and? She doesn't give up the ghost?
A little tired. John Jones, 900 Minnesota, on item C, I was just here if anyone had any questions about the contract.
Anyone have any questions? That's simple. Thank you, John. Would anyone else like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Motion. Motion to approve items A through E.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Trace for approval of items A through E, and a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
And the vote carries.
That brings us to the first item and the only item under public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the minute?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021 dash zero eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, to amend table three dash seven of the Land Development Code to include mobile food dispensing vehicles, food trucks, as a conditional use in the HB Highway Business District, providing for subverability, providing for conflicts, for providing for an effective date above its full title. Final public hearing will be heard on February 11th, 2021. Action on ordinance number 2021 dash oh eight.
Thank you. Mr. Manzares, are you going, or, Andre, I thought.
Snuck up on you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is an item that the City Council asked for us to bring forward as an emergency ordinance item. It's, it's ordinance 2020 dash zero eight, and it's related to the mobile food dispensing vehicles, commonly referred to as food trucks. And the map that you see on the screen represents the proposal to permit mobile food dispensing vehicles as a conditional use within the Highway Business zoning district. The maroon color that you see on the map along US 10213th Street is primarily where most of the highway business zoning is located within the city. There's also a few pockets along Old Canoe Creek and Canoe Creek, and the intersection of Nolte and Canoe Creek, and Canoe Creek and Old Canoe Creek are the south. So, those are the areas that we are proposing at this time for that purpose. So, as I said, you had asked us at last City Council meeting to bring it forward, and originally, it was recognized as a, as a single hearing. However, section 166 of the Florida statutes requires that emergency ordinances be done through two public hearings. So, this is the first of two public hearings to adopt this item. The second public hearing, as the clerk said, would be on February 11th. Just a bit of background, MFDV or mobile food dispensing vehicles, there's a statute definition of what it is, found under section 509.102.1 of the Florida statutes, and it reads in part that any vehicle that is a public food service establishment and that is self-propelled or otherwise movable from place to place, and includes self-contained utilities, including but not limited to gas, water, electricity, or liquid waste disposal. In other words, everything that is required to make that mobile food vehicle a business establishment needs to be all on board and not attached to any other structure. So, anything that is not, that does not meet that definition is not considered a MFDV. Therefore, we can regulate it or code-enforce it. In other words, if we decide that we don't want those vehicles other than the statutory preemption, that we are able to do that. But if it meets the definition of a MFDV based on the statute, then we are able to provide for a business tax receipt, because that is a tax on operating that business. And that is the only ability that we have as a city. However, based on your direction and consultation with the city attorney, we are moving forward with a emergency ordinance to regulate MFDVs within the highway business as a conditional use. It is consistent with a growth management goal, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2020 dash zero one. And asks that the City Council do the same at this first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have a number of people in the audience that would like to speak to this first. Liza April, is that correct? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Honorable City Council members and fellow citizens of Saint Cloud, thank you for allowing me to talk this evening. My name is Liza April, and I'm here with my husband, Jason Jorino. We are the owners of Ruta Taina. It's a food truck. Tonight, I would like to share my heart with you. I'm here because of my faith in God and because of his leading my family to the mainland of this great country, where we are freely allowed to proclaim our faith in him. He has led us here to Saint Cloud. Because opportunity is allowed to abound to those who want and we worked hard for it. We have been blessed with a business that was our dream. We have tried so hard to play by the rules, even though it seems and felt like the rules were being made up as we went along, making it more difficult for us to sit here in Saint Cloud. Saint Cloud is a soldier city, a city founded by men and women who fought with their literal blood, sweat, and tears against oppression for the rights of everyone to be treated equally and to have the same shot, shot as success as everyone else, even if they're not like you or me. They fought for the rights of every restaurant's owners, every business owners to be successful. I'm not here to ruin no one's business. We came here because the city embodies for its founding ideals and principles of freedom and capitalism, which states that everyone has the same chance in making regardless of the competition and obstacles that face you. In fact, competition is what makes this country stronger and better. The government was not put in place to be an obstacle to business and their citizens with excessive regulation, but it says to make sure everyone, especially its citizens, have equal safe and quality access to every business we need and border. We believe this, if you make a great product, sell it in a reasonable price, give great customer service, and keep your overhead low so you can succeed. These American principles are rooted in the real American capitalism. We are not wanting to put anyone else out of business, and we don't want anyone to put us out of business, especially the government. We just want to be good neighbors and good citizens. My family and I love this city. We own a house here. We love our local restaurants. We want everyone to succeed. We love where God has brought us. We want to continue playing by the rules and to have a chance to make it just like everybody else. Since I believe that there is an opportunity for anyone to make it happen, we want to become successful business owners in the same place where we want to keep raising our family. It's important to mention that we are not diminishing the value of any business. We have sacrificed and invested a great amount of time and money in process of getting our business to be operational. This comes from our hard work and dedication, so I know for a fact the restaurant owners have, have been done too. I humbly ask you to please don't change the rules. Anyone who has already followed the established rules and wants to work hard should have a chance to realize the American dream of owning a successful and general's business. Thank you, and thank you all. My God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne Norman?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dwayne Norman, 3551 Buckingham Court. I'm just here to say I have nothing against food trucks. The 192 corridor is all I was thinking about, but after looking at that map, I think it expands it. We have lots of codes and ordinances in this city that have been longstanding. The sign ordinance alone is made and put there to keep our city as beautiful as possible, and I just, I, I feel bad for people that want to have a business, but those businesses also have paid prime real estate fees to have that frontage, whether you're down Canoe Creek, you're on 192. They've paid impact fees. They've gone through all these ordinances with parking, signage, building codes, all this money these, these businesses have put together. And I just see a nightmare, I don't know what the conditional use means, but I see a nightmare from the canal to Narcusi Road. We have 30 food trucks. There's plenty of parking lots to do that. And I just keep going back to the signed ordinance. That is there to keep our city clean, and I think the food trucks would not do that for us, okay? These guys have a lot, all the business owners up and down 192 have a lot of money invested, okay? Orange County doesn't have the same sign, I know I keep going back to the sign codes, but they don't have the same thing. You'll go up Orange Avenue, and there'll be 20 or 30 of those little yard signs at every little stoplight. We don't have that, and there's a reason, and we don't have the food trucks like they do on Orange Blossom Trail yet. And nothing against them. I have nothing against them being competitive. I think the restaurant owners aren't worried about competition. I think our local restaurant owners for years, you talk about competition, with these restaurant owners, if they're worried about competition, help other businesses get started. If a business was having a hard time, like the Coffee Cup has before, the Catfish Place took them in. They're not worried about competition. They're just worried about fairness. They have a lot of money invested, and these food trucks, I know they're an investment, but they're nowhere near the investment of a brick and mortar and following all the rules that they have to follow. So, I skipped around my notes. I had three or four pages, but basically, I just keep going back to, they don't have to follow the parking. They don't have to have the setbacks from the road. They don't have to follow the signage. I mean, you can't put up a tent for any kind of sale in your front parking lot without getting a temporary permit, and it's, what, 30 days long, 15 days long? You gotta take it down. You gotta buy the permit. You can't have, businesses can't have the flags. They just put out there. A cell phone company can't go out there and put the flags and balloons trying to attract people to buy their cell phones. So, why should the food truck people be able to come in and do that? I love that they want to have a business. I think there's a time and a place for that, like we used to have back downtown, where they all gather in one place, and they're not on the frontage, making our town look, you know, less desirable, which, again, is the same reason for lots of our ordinances and codes we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Mr. Mayor? Could I ask Mr. Sturgeon a real quick question? Mr. Sturgeon, earlier this afternoon, I asked you to check with the City of Kissimmee and the county. What kind of ordinance and how do they, what do they do with this?
Both, I'll just answer it generically. Both the city and the county have very restrictive requirements for food trucks. The county allows a special events permit, good for 45 days. It can be extended up to another 45 days. And the City of Kissimmee has a very tedious, right here is their policy on what they call intinerant food vendors. And it's not only food trucks, but food booths, tents, everything, so it's very heavily regulated.
And you and I had asked, I'd asked you the question, how much money it costs, like, brick and mortar to have a restaurant on a yearly basis, how much money it would cost them to be in a brick and mortar store versus one of these trucks? Can you tell me how much difference money, money-wise?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Anderson what type of fees we have to pay annually and the initial startup cost.
How much money, how much money difference shortness we're falling, we're losing?
Well, Mr. Cooper, if I may, and just, I mean, that's, I don't know if Mr. Anderson or any of us can answer that question, it's gonna be dependent on a lot of issues. Most particularly, maybe Mr. Askew can help you with this. Most particularly, maybe Mr. Askew can help you with this. Most particularly whether the restaurant actually owns the building it's in or leases the building it's in. I do not know, maybe those of you who have property in downtown or in other areas would know what the square footage price is, but by, by just looking at that number alone, I think any restaurant that's leasing space is paying a considerable amount of rent just to be in the brick and mortar building they're in.
Versus, versus the catering?
Versus a food truck where they may be, you know, I don't, I don't, of course, most, my understanding around the state, most of the individuals that have these mobile food vendors, they, sometimes they are paying money to the property upon which the truck is parked, but it's, I assure you, it's nowhere near the, the amount that a restaurant is paying.
Like a tenth, probably.
I can give you any dollars, but I'm pretty sure it's probably not the same amount.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I guess, I'm confused now because we were told in our last meeting that we could not regulate, that we were, the state had overruled us, so I'm confused now, how is the county and the city able to do it?
Well, if I could, address that issue before you take further public comment. So, a little bit more history on this particular issue. First of all, recognize that the City of San Clau does not allow these trucks anywhere in the city. By zoning, by, you do not allow, the only time they've been permitted is when an applicant moves for a special events permit as part of a unique special event and goes through the special event permitting process. The City of Kissimmee and Osceola County, as I understand it, have a specific reference to them and authorization to get them on a limited restricted basis. When the legislature trained to change the, change the statute, the legislature included a couple provisions in it, as we talked about before. The first of it seemed to preempt the city with regard to licensing or permitting these sort of establishments at all. And the second piece of it put a provision in there that said that, that the city has to allow these somewhere in the city, basically. The second piece of that is very clear. We're very familiar with times when the city, when cities have been told and preempted, say, you can't ban these type of uses, you have to allow them. The first part of that is, has, is, is confusing at best. We've had several discussions with other attorneys that are looking at this. We've talked with representatives of the state. Representative Hawkins' aide, who spoke with you earlier, helped us get in touch with the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. There is a significant amount of confusion with regard to the implications of the first part of that, the piece that whether the city can or cannot regulate them. Based on all the analysis we've done since we first started looking at this issue over the last three or four weeks and talking with several individuals, we're comfortable that the city can regulate these issues with this conditional use permit if, and this is important, if the city has the provision that allows them somewhere in the city. So, our premise would be that, and remember, this ordinance isn't really, this ordinance is actually giving the opportunity for these trucks to exist legally in the city. That's what this ordinance does. It provides that a conditional use permit can be applied for and can be obtained and thus would meet that part of the statute. And that in itself would give us an ability to regulate those trucks or these vehicles that are not otherwise permitted in the city, because we have met that provision of the statute that says we have to allow them here, which we don't have right now. That make sense?
What if, what if we use the Kissimmee's terminology and the verbiage that they use, that it can only be used when they, when they allow them and that's it?
Well, that was one of the things that Councilwoman Metheny had suggested, something similar to that, where we would create a food truck park or something like that. And we felt that, staff believed based on the direction of the council, that that is something that the city might go to, once we could figure out a little bit more from a logistics perspective, how that would work out and staff could work on that. But remember, we were, we were charged with trying to get something moving forward so we could address this quicker. So, I am not saying, suggesting to you that the proposed ordinance is going to be where the city ends up with on these vehicles. We're suggesting to you that this gives you the ability to do some of the initial regulation that, that has been expressed to the council as a concern here in the city. So it could change.
But I'm back to the same question. If we, if we change the terminology and say that we're going to do pretty much what the City of Kissimmee, they, they stop it completely unless they just want them to come in for a day or two or 45 hours or whatever, whatever it is, that they can, their terminology is strength, got enough strength of tenacity that they, they just can't come if they don't want them to.
Well, you have a conditional use permit process, that's what this is proposed, which allows the city council, which is one of the reasons why I think from a legal and a planning perspective, we were recommending move forward with it. What the conditional purpose, the conditional permit process allows is for the city council to look at the individual location and decide, is this a location that one of these vehicles is appropriate for? Allows you to look around, what's around it, how close it is to other brick and mortars, what, you heard some of the issues that one of the speakers just talked about, that only parking, setbacks, all those issues. So it allows you to look at each individual in sight and say, will this use fit on that type of site? Not, will fit anywhere in highway business, but a particular location that is the value of using, doing it as a conditional use process, because you could do, Mr. Cooper, exactly what the City of Kissimmee has done, however you do it, you could do it through a conditional use permit. By example, some rational and reasonable conditions could be, well, you are only allowed to be there on certain days for certain hours. You can't have any signage, you can't have any outdoor seating, you can't do these kind of things, can't have any open fire pits, can't have that. And these are just things that we've looked at from other, other individuals we've talked to around the state that are doing regulation. Some of the other ones I've seen are that they've actually put distance restrictions where you can't have these, can't be close to a, to a, you know, to another, to essentially another restaurant, to deal with, some communities are doing that. This would allow you to look at each particular location and say, is this right for the City of San Clau? And if it's not, then the conditional use permit doesn't get granted. If it is, with the appropriate conditions, then it fits into the area and you're able to do it. That's why we felt this was give the city council.
Dan, could you look, could you look at Kissimmee's ordinance and kind of, let's see, maybe we could go in that direction a little bit?
If that's the direction of the city council, we certainly can do that.
Has the City of Kissimmee dealt with this preemption? They hadn't even addressed this.
I haven't spoken with their legal counsel. I understand that the deputy city manager spoke with them today and with somebody in their code enforcement division and the individual there thanked her for making them aware of this preemption.
I'd like to get back to public comment and let the people finish who have come to speak. Carla Jimenez. Please state your name and address for the record and try to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Jimenez, owner of The Jummy's Boot. I just would share a little bit of my history. I have a work and with this pandemic, I was fired. My husband have a transportation business too, one company. With the same pandemic, we have the same situation, he lost all the contract. He still have his own work, but they cut the hours and I tried to do the best for my family and my, I'm so sorry. I always, my dream was to have a restaurant, but the initial cost is really expensive at this time. We have some savings and we start with a food mobile vendor in the City of San Clau to the process to my dream, have a restaurant, but I need to do step by step. The most important to me is bring a good food and the best customer service to our community. When I decide open our business, the most important, another important thing is to, is do the correct things and the all the process that's supposed to be by the law and the all the requirements. I have all my permits, the county, the city and the health department, and they inspect all my, my cards and everything was good. We have a commissary that all the food truck is a requirement and in the commissary, we dump the water, the wastewater, we take clean water and do all the food prep. My experience was really good with all our customer. They are really happy in San Clau City have food trucks. They want different food and they, we have many customers, they come to different cities. The city of San Clau is growing and have more construction projects for housing. In my opinion, our customer and our customer opinion too, bring more diversity and in the area of food of our city town. Shoes, they shoes is take a meal in our brick and mortar or take fast to go meal. Thank you for your opportunity to share my history. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Deborah Meredith? Please state your name and address for the record and try and limit your comments to three minutes.
Deborah Meredith, 5595 East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway. I have a food truck, it's called Frank's Grilled Cheese. I work for San Clau Trailer Park, maybe some of you know Ms. Betty Padgett. She has allowed me to park my truck there. I am behind the building, the front of the building on highway and so I am set back. I was excited, it's been two years for me coming, I start tomorrow, I've been on a health journey. And then to be excited, to be told last month that this is happening, I went down, I got my license, I have my county, my state, I've done everything with the fire department, I have done every single thing that I have to do. And then be told that maybe this won't happen. In our community, I am the park manager there. We have over 120 homes and most of them are 80 years old and a lot of them don't have cars. And they don't walk across the highway, there are no crosswalks there. And so they're so excited about the food truck coming and when I told them I was coming here tonight, they're like, no way, and I'm like, yes. So I'm here to say, please, I just bought my license, it's good for a year and if you stop, then that just stops us. And we put a lot of work, a lot of money. We had it painted here on 192 from one of the vendors. And I'm just asking to give us an opportunity to, to better ourselves and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Wilson? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Wilson. I'm a San Clau resident, I'm at 3530 Fire Risco Road. I have a food truck and I, I look at the situation and I find that it's very ironic because they don't complain when McDonald's get put on 192, they don't complain when they have to Wendy's get on 192. That impacts every restaurant on that restaurant, on that street. And that's why tonight I want to share with you, San Clau is going from country to concrete. They are growing. And you start pushing back or limiting what, you know, people better themselves. Before COVID, I had an entertainment company. I didn't have to sell a hot dog. And now I got to sell a hot dog. I have eight people living with me. And it's very hard to stay, how can I say it, to stay positive when every time I spent thousands of dollars to get what I, what I have, thousand. Most food trucks are 79,000, 49,000. They're a lot of money, you know, and then to get shut down for not having, for having a table out or get shut down because, you know, you can't fry food, you know? I'm in coordinates, I, I have every paperwork that is necessary for me to be a vendor. And it's ironic that, you know, one person makes a complaint and now we have, everybody want to do, they want to change the whole thing up because of a complaint. And I don't understand that because I don't see nobody complaining about the new McDonald's that is getting built on 192. That's going to impact every restaurant on that bill, on that street. McDonald's is really powerful, so my $4 hot dog is not going to erupt somebody's business, you know? Not everybody in San Clau is going to come to me. It's not going to happen. So I'll just appreciate if you guys, you know, thoroughly give us an opportunity. That's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Contello?
Feel like a little bit of deja vu again. It's pretty much what I was talking about a little bit earlier and my concern is that, I mean, you hear for yourself, you heard just a few that you've heard so far of these food truck vendors coming up, they're asking you for a chance. I mean, isn't that what it's all about, is to, to have that opportunity to have your own business? I mean, that's something that I dream for. I mean, as I brought it up earlier, I'm a local barber. That's my dream, is to have my own place. Why would theirs have to be cut short? Why don't, why don't they deserve the chance? I believe, if I remember correctly, Jimmy Bears started out, if I'm correct, they started out as a food truck and they were kicked around, told they couldn't park somewhere. Now they got their own spot and Jimmy Bears is very well known in this town. I mean, the first lady that came up, Ruta Taina, I've eaten there several times. Food is absolutely amazing and as you can tell, I love food. Let's face it, they call me Big Sal for a reason. Bo's Hot Links, absolutely most amazing smoked sausages and hot dogs you've ever had. You have Soldier City Grill, they've named themselves after this town, after this community. Every Tuesday night, they're there to serve the Cruisers of Central Florida, it's a local motorcycle club, or group, not a club, but a group. And they're looking for something good to eat and it's, it's right there. Sometimes we don't want to give that, we don't want to give that food, that, that money to, not the local restaurants, but we don't want to give that money to the, the big conglomerates, to McDonald's, to Burger King, to Wendy's. I sure don't. I want to give it to local vendors, to local restaurants. And all I'm saying is that they really deserve that chance. I mean, I'm sure if any of you were in their shoes, that you had that one chance, that one opportunity to completely turn your life around and to have your own business and not have to, you know, kick it to the man and, you know, answer yes or no, or yes sir, how high would you like me to jump? I'm sure you'd like to be able to have that opportunity to do it yourself. I believe every single one of them, as well as the grilled cheeses that I'm looking forward to having, I'm just saying, because that sounded good. They all deserve that chance. That's why I'm here to just, as just a citizen, just to tell you out of just my perspective that, you know, with all my heart, they really deserve that opportunity. They really do. And they deserve to be a part of San Clau permanently, just like others have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sal Torre. I believe we have an item to be read into the record?
Yes, we have a letter that was received from the Libertarian Party of Osceola County and it reads, hello, honorable council members, I write to you today as it seems that a critical resolution shall be coming before you that could seriously impact San Clau as a growing community. Since the inception of our current platform, the Libertarian Party of Osceola County has called on all levels of government to eliminate all regulations and fees that artificially increase the cost of starting and maintaining a business. With that, we find that any further regulation of food trucks does, does just that. It artificially increases the cost of doing business. We sympathize with those like Mr. Woodsby, but just as any business owner must understand, the government is not in existence to punish competition. As a city, we should be looking at ways to make running a local business such as a Coffee Cup easier and more financially feasible, rather than looking to make it more difficult for newcomers. As our platform mentions, we also want to, the cost of maintaining a business not to be increased by artificial means. Creating barriers to entry will only ensure that San Clau stops growing as a community and slowly slows its charm as businesses slowly close and no new ones move in. For this reason, we pray that this council will reject creating any further obstacles and barriers for new, fresh ideas within San Clau. Thank you. Marcus Marrero, Chairperson of the Libertarian Party of Chairperson of the Libertarian Party of Osceola County.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Would anyone else like to speak to this item in the audience? Please state your name and address for the record. I think you know the routine.
Vinnie Barber, Saint Cloud, Florida. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I've heard several of the folks come up very passionate about their food trucks. And obviously, I'm here with restaurant owners as well. I'm in a unique position, though I just wanted to share this information with those that came up, that I've I've went from one to the other. And I I know what you guys are going through right now. I know how you feel. And if you can figure it out and get your business established, you're gonna be so much better off in the future. There's reasons why these things are in place. I didn't see them 10 years ago. I felt the same as everyone who's walked up here tonight, and I felt the same way about it. Now, 10 years later, a lot of hard work and a lot of hours, I have a brick and mortar. It's not about competition. It's not about stifling business growth in our community. It's about, I guess, in a lot of ways, paying your dues. You know, you've gotta pay your dues. It's it's difficult in a situation, you take our restaurant, for example, that's in the back corner of a plaza and doesn't have that instant exposure of a highway. You know, 600 more feet, I'd be doing four times as much business than what I'm doing right now. So it's disheartening to see someone come in and park right up on the road and get that kind of instant business that otherwise, you know, you could have or could be going to you. It it's it's a tough thing. I I I go back to, I'm not sure what you guys are even proposing up here with this, but I just go back to, you know, create, create your spot. Create your spot. Do it in a park or whatever and make a spot where people who wanna enjoy that type of atmosphere or that type of food can go to. Give these people a place to go and have their spot and fulfill their dreams. But just so you know, there's other cities in Saint Cloud that you can operate food trucks in. You you don't have to be here. You you don't. You'll find an opportunity. Get out there and work hard at it and and just do it. So I don't envy y'all on y'all's decision. I've I've been on both sides of this. It's very, very difficult. And I just wanted those people to know that are in food trucks, don't think that the restaurants are out to get you. It's, we've got a lot, as much as you have invested, we have 10 or 15 times that invested in what we've got to protect and actually go through. So it's, it's just really difficult. It ju- it just really is. So I I just wanted those people to know that we hear you. And and we want you to succeed. We want you to to be in our community. But we gotta find a way to make it work to where it's beneficial for everyone and doesn't take away from what we've already done and set up and established. I I also think that it's a good idea to really look hard at the, what Kissimmee and and Osceola are doing. Because if they're doing it with no repercussions, whatever they're doing, obviously works. We don't have to reinvent a wheel. We just gotta get one put on the trailer. You know what I mean? So thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Have you already spoken, sir? You've already spoken. Is anyone else that hasn't spoke would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record and...
Hi, I'm Jody Hartman. I'm at 3944 Canoe Creek Road in Saint Cloud. I'm not really asking to say yay or nay at this point in time. I know there's another meeting on the 11th. What I would request is that the full language be available to allow the citizens to comment on what the provisional use would be or or situational use would be, to get a full understanding of what this ordinance is is stating and requiring. You know, having the regulatory requirements of a mobile food dispensing vehicle, I think all the operators here are all in agreement with that. It's just the unknown of what it is that's coming down. I think that's causing a lot of the consternation and concern. I'm sitting here thinking, well, I do a lot of fundraising with local fundraising organi- or local non-charitable charitable organizations. I work with them on a regular basis. You know, parking in the Staples Parking Lot and other places where I do give back. I'm all for, okay, I I need to do a permit, as long as it doesn't do the traditional, takes me 45 days just to get a permit for an event that a Boy Scout troop called me for two weeks ago. So that's where I think, you know, supporting local businesses, supporting our community and coming together as a community to allow local business growth and development. I think everybody is looking to do that collectively and collaboratively. So that was my only comment.
Thank you very much. If you haven't pulled out it for anybody that spoke and filled out one of these, please do so before.
Mayor?
You finish. Yes, sir.
If I could, I just wanna point out that I think that the young lady has the agenda shell. And we can get her, get her ahold of the clerk's office and show her where the rest of the package is that shows the ordinance and the verbiage. So give us a call at the clerk's office, so we'll make sure you clearly have that.
Is there anyone else that? Please step forward.
Hi, how are you? My name is Jason Geraldino. I'm the owner and my wife of Ruth Ataina, the food truck. My address, I live here in Saint Cloud. My food truck is located in the property of the First Baptist Church, 1851 13th Street, Saint Cloud, Florida. We pay, we pay rent. We pay a lot of rent just to be in front of the 192. We we pay all utilities, water, electricity. We have all the permits. We have everything. This is Saint Cloud. We're growing. We want something new in Saint Cloud, and the food trucks are giving that opportunity to all the people residing in here. I just drove around today like an hour with my mom, looking at a piece of land to buy because she wants to build a residence because we live in here in Saint Cloud and she love it. This is Saint Cloud. Our our business is very family oriented. We close, our latest that we close is 8 o'clock. We don't want nothing later than that because we want our clientele to be family oriented. We don't want nothing after that. We don't want nobody style, 12, 2 o'clock in the morning. We don't want that. That's what we first told our landlords, and that's what they gave us the opportunity. And I'm here in front of you and in front of the audience too, that we're restaurants, food trucks, we're supposed to be stronger together, like Saint Cloud. No Kissimmee, no Orange County, we're Saint Cloud. This is the city of Saint Cloud, the soldier city that that we're supposed to help each other. And grow, I'm, I don't know what to say. I'm just here to, because this is what support my family and all of the businesses, restaurants and everybody, just give us the chance. We won't, we won't let you down, guys. Restaurants, mobile food truck, food trucks, my my, mine is a trailer. And I have to move it every night. I comply with everything. Three weeks ago, the fire department came to our business and they they shut us down because we didn't have a fire suppression system. We, this is our second food truck because we have one in Clermont. And we comply with everything. We didn't know we had to have one, but in Clermont, they let us have the the trailer like that. So when we came here, the fire department came, they shut us down. So we didn't know about that. So the next, in less than 24 hours, we had the fire suppression system. We paid a lot of money for it because we wanna comply with the Saint Cloud rules. So just to let you know that we're here, they wanna comply with everything. And just to give us the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken that wants to speak?
My name is Victor. I am the husband for Carla Jimenez. Yomi Spot. Basically, all the person and owners that for food truck come here for the same. Give you the chance for us to try to do something different in the, in our city. We try to do all the code enforcement rules. We don't like to break any rules. All of us have all the papers, all the permits, all the license. I understand in one time, in one part, what the Jimmy Bears and the other brick and mortar say. But really, we have a, we pay a rent too. We have a, and the competition is is better, it it bring more better for city Saint Cloud. And the diversity of the food for the cost for the, our citizen is maybe no one to, we open 9, 9 to 2 p.m., to 2 p.m., 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. It's only basically that hour that we operate Yomi Spot because we only do fast food to go. Person coming, go and sit and 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 really, and and it's fast. It's not like you can go and sit down because it's, we don't have that choice. Code enforcement, no one, any table, any chairs outside. So that is a benefit that he have. We don't have that benefit in some part, in the park. But yeah, I only really like to tell that bring us the opportunity and and try to grow the city and bring more diversity of food for the, our citizen that is really growing more than usual. Because I know it's too many houses right here building, and that that be all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Manzares?
Sir.
Do you have something to say about the issue of conditional use? Try and explain that a little further.
Well, I'm gonna also make this comment respectfully to everybody that's spoken that said they have all the permits and requirements. They do not. Because currently, the city code does not allow any of the up, any of the individuals that have spoke to you regarding their their existing vehicles. The code does not have a provision for that in it, which is part of the reason why we're having this. This, also, this issue did not come up because of complaints that were necessarily received. It came up because of the recent change to the legislation, as I, as I pointed out earlier. And staff was started looking and trying to figure out how it was, how it, the implications on the city with regard to what the state did. You've heard discussion regarding other communities. Other communities have taken a different view than Saint Cloud did with regard to these, to these type of vehicles. And they have essentially addressed them and allowed them, some without restrictions, some with restrictions. But Saint Cloud and the City Council gave staff directions several years ago that these types of vehicles would not be permitted as a matter of right and only, as I said earlier, with regard to those special events, when the food truck was part of the special event. So what this ordinance actually does, it actually changes this existing code, which does not allow for these vehicles and allows for them. And all the individuals that spoke with you about how they run their businesses, the conditional use piece of it all would allow the City Council to essentially codify that or include that in part of a permit if they didn't. So you heard individuals spoke about how they only, they're only open for certain hours. Well, right now, because they are not allowed by code, and there are no code restrictions on it, they don't have to stay open that long. They can, they can voluntarily agree to do it, of course. But if you were to grant the conditional use permit, we would anticipate that that would include particular hours where they would have to do that, and there'd be restrictions on it, and they'd be able to do business. And so that's just one example of what might be in it. Again, a conditional use permit is designed to allow the City Council to say, no, this is not a blanketed permitted right, but it is a permitted right, and we will allow it under certain conditions in a certain location. And that's what this process will create, which is more than any of these individuals have right now in the city of Saint Cloud.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have discussion and further consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Cooper.
Thank you. Mr. Manzares, the normal charge for these catering vendors to come in, isn't it about $900?
That's, as I understand it, that's the cost of a conditional permit application, conditional use permit application, yes. It is a process.
Is that per year?
No. That's an applic- that's, the conditional use permit process is an application. Comes in front, it's published, it comes in front of the City Council. That's the process, the staff requirement to do it. Once they has a conditional use permit, the only annual cost they'd have to do is to continue with whatever business tax receipt they might need.
Somebody had said something to me that there were inspection, that the, because of gas and flammable, that the fire department would have to charge for inspection of that.
Well, and and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Cooper, because one of the other issues with regard to this is a concern among the, in the state with regard to what authority does the local fire department have to regulate some of these vehicles based on the state statute that was recently adopted. And unfortunately, I can't give you a direct answer to that. I've talked to the fire chief about this. I've talked to the fire marshal about it. I've talked to other fire marshals about it. And it, there's a certain amount of uncertainty about how, under that, under the recent law, how much authority they have with regard to inspecting these type of units within, within the city, within any city or county in the state. Which is why, as part of this process tonight, I believe Mr. Sturgeon was going to request that the council reach out to Representative Hawkins and request that he, his office participate in trying to clarify some of the issues associated with this statute as we roll into the new legislative session. I think that's part of, one of his requests. Because it's, as I said earlier, it's, as I said, with the exception of the piece that says you have to allow them somewhere in the city, it's a very short code or statute, but it has, it's, it is, at best, I think, confusing. So I can't answer your question, Mr. Cooper.
Okay.
I I can't. I apologize. I can't, but I can't.
Right.
Do you have any other questions?
Can you dig to the bottom and find out the answers to that?
We are trying to dig to the bottom to find out. Our, our bigger course and and was to try to ask, to try to hopefully move forward with trying to get some clarification out of the state with regard to this. Just as you're, as, so you can understand a little bit more history on it. This change is about, is an addition of a small section to to the statute. It was part of about 120 or 120-page bill that was adopted by the, at the request of the Department of Business and Professional Regulation, as we understand it. And this was a piece that was inserted at the last minute into that large bill. That's what we understand. And so, and I don't, and this happens often. When things like that happen, the legislation has to be, has glitches in it. And in, and in, and in future legislative sessions, the legislature will act to correct the glitches. And we think that might be, that might be the case here.
When did that come into law? Was that January 1st?
No, it was October 1st.
October 1st? Okay. Because sometimes they come in a different time.
No, they're usually July 1st or October 1st.
Do we have further discussion from council? That's a question. Trace? Uh, first one was that. Second, and perfect. To me, conditional use is, you need to know the the rules or, you know, what a good job looks like. What, what does a a piece of property, maybe with a large parking lot, what, what items does that property need to have to be able to have this function? Is there, does it need bathrooms? Does it need dumpsters? Does it need seating? For us to have a conditional use, have we mapped out those those rules yet? Or at least the minimum technical standards for something to be viable?
We, we have not. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. So if you recall, a few months ago, this adding came before, and it was related more to the downtown. And you asked us to look at it as well and identify some criteria under which food trucks could be permitted in the central business district. And we came up with a set of criteria, such as, one, the food truck had to be accessory or ancillary to the primary use of that property, that it could not have frontage on a named roadway, that it had to be shielded, and if it was against the alley, it was okay. And some additional criteria that I don't, I can't recall right now, but we added several criteria. Those criteria, and in one of which I think Councilman Askew brought up, was that when they get the permit, that they would have to commit that within the year they made arrangements to become a brick and mortar structure. So essentially, it was trying to set it up as sort of an incubator to give them opportunity to try out the business before they commit to a permanent location. to try out the business before they commit to a permanent location. What this is proposing is a lot wider and broader and gives the city council more latitude and discretion to determine where it's appropriate, as, as the city attorney said, to determine if it's too close to another business and whatever criteria you want to establish. And those be part of the permit that's approved for that food truck at that time. It could include things such as hours of operation, lighting, whatever it is that you deem appropriate to ensure that it's compatible with the uses that are adjacent to that food truck.
Okay. And I don't know if anyone's been to, um, it's called Food Truck Bazaar. There's a, it's like a traveling group and they'll usually have five or 10 food trucks in a big parking lot somewhere. There, there's groups that organize some of those food truck events as special events in certain locations and it's weekly or monthly or, um, you know, that, that's a good opportunity. And then has anyone been to a la carte? It's a very small place in downtown Orlando. I think they have five or six food trucks. They constructed a little like, I don't know, thousand or 1,500 square foot building where beer, you know, they make money based on rent for the five or six food trucks and then also they sell beer and all the, you know, um, drinks that you would get come from that area. They've got bathrooms there. It's, it's set up in my mind as a, you know, restaurant incubator towards those six trucks. I think two of them stay and then, you know, three or four of them rotate after six months or so. One of them, which is really good, Chicken Fire, just moved up into a brick and mortar and it's just kind of the success story of that food truck. And that's kind of how City of Orlando came about of figuring out this because they were having them on every, every street corner. You know, that's something I, I think that we should look into or if, you know, someone makes an application for that, that's something I'd be supportive of. If, if we go through with enacting this, um, some of these, these folks, you know, paid specifically some of the fees towards City of St. Cloud. And if they're not able to operate in the City of St. Cloud anymore, I, I'm fine refunding their business tax receipt or whatever they have to do, whatever they paid fees to the city because now they can't operate. They got, they got that license with the thought that they could operate in the city, even though it wasn't the full permitting process, just, uh, that's something I'd looked, looked into.
Deputy Mayor Trace? To date, we have not issued or collected any fees for any food trucks that have been in the city. Only fees that we have issued this time is for existing facilities, not for food trucks. And only time we issue any fee has, has to do with a special event permit.
Okay. Cause it, to me, there has to be a set of review criteria and we have to let individuals know, business owners that have excess parking or whatever, if they have extra room, if, if all of the parking is, is used up based on their use, then there's not really any extra room for anything to happen. We don't want to create additional issues of stacking when, when cars are trying to park and pull in and it just, it does create a mess. So I think it's all my comments. I've got a couple of other questions. I'll let other folks speak if they want to.
If I might just add one, one final point, just to reiterate, um, city attorney's concern, M F D Vs, mobile, the food trucks that are regulated by the state, we can issue a business tax receipt and the purpose of the business tax receipt, as you well know, is for us to be able to check their state licenses for food handling and whatever else might be part of that venture. We in the city also issue a certificate of use that allows us to check for safety issues such as a due business inspection for fire hazards and so on. And the way the state preemption is set up right now, it does not allow us to do that. And that is part of the challenge where it becomes a safety issue when we're not able to inspect those vehicles.
Okay. So I'll get into that item now. To me, there's a, a big distinction between a mobile food vendor and a stationary food vendor. Mobile food vendor, when I was in construction, there would be a car coming around, we called it something different than a food truck, but it came around, you'd get some hot food off of it. It was great. It was better than the cold sandwich I had. And, you know, they didn't, they didn't stay there, they didn't cause issues. It was really like five minutes in and out, they had their, their route and they, almost like an ice cream truck, right? I mean, it just comes in and out. It's not something that's stationary. That to me is what this preemption, you know, that's how I view it is. If it's, if it's on there and it's going, it's not, it's not parked there. A stationary food vendor, that's where we have to look into all of the, the ramifications and issues that come about by something in a spot, you know, continually that kind of wasn't cited that way. And that's why I'm fine with the conditional use process because we can look into that. I just want to make sure that we put the guidelines in place for individuals to know what, what they need to do to get to the finish line. Cause that's part of my i- issue with government is you never know what the full process is because you kind of bounce around, especially if it's your first time doing something. So if we can do a clear process, let them know exactly what it takes to, to get it done, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
I guess the other part is the, you brought up distance and you're, you know, looking on the map of 192. So let's, I'll bring up the, the one closest to me with the hot dog vendor. So let's say that he meets all the criteria there, but he doesn't meet the criteria because he's so close to Bonnie Lee's or something like that. So is there going to be something in place that they could go to the particular restaurant, Jimmy Bear's or whatever and say, hey, I'm going to be putting it here. Are you okay with it? Are you willing to sign a letter saying that I'm okay having it out here? I don't know what the rules are yet. I'm with Mr. Trace there. When I can start seeing some of the, the rules come forward, then, then, you know, we can kind of take a look at that. But I just, I guess I'm trying to be open to different things, but I'm a definitely a brick and mortar guy myself.
Well, and Mr. Askew, that distance thing was something that I saw in a code in a different part of the state.
Okay.
Frankly, I don't, wasn't going to recommend that because I think there's a huge practical, practical issue with trying to enforce that. It's a very difficult thing to do from a distance perspective, but do it. My suggestion to you is that this is introduction, uh, the final adoption is February 11th. We certainly could give you before the final meeting, a sort of a list of the things that we see would be possible conditions that would be placed on these. As the city manager referenced, Osceola County and Kissimmee and it, uh, have already, have, have already adopted, uh, permits that have specific conditions on them related to things like signage and hours and things like that. So we can put together sort of a laundry list of possible things. But again, the ordinance says you can put conditions on these, but they're going to be specific to the location. So we can give you a list of 20 different possible conditions, however, some of them might be or may not be applicable. Mr. Trace's point, Deputy Mayor Trace's point was exactly one of the ones that we've thought about is some places might have, might be as part of a parking lot where there's plenty of parking, others might not. And it's just going to be based on a use basis, a location basis. So we can certainly do that before the next council meeting as a general list of things we, we think would be in there.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Matheny.
Thank you. So I hear everybody, I hear everybody, I, I hear both sides of this story. You know, it's been a really unprecedented year, a horrible year for everybody. So I, I, you know, I feel everybody's pain with that. I guess for me, I feel like we haven't had food trucks in the city of St. Cloud. And then all of a sudden this ordinance changed and, and all of a sudden we have food trucks just littering up and down 192. And I like food trucks myself. I agree with something Mr. Norman said. I don't think it looks very attractive up and down 192 to just have trucks and flags and all kinds of paraphernalia all up and down. I personally don't think that that looks, you know, we're trying to do everything we can in the city to make it the best place to live. Personally, I don't, I don't think that looks good. You know, I don't want to be summer on Boulevard. You know, we've, we, and to a point someone made about our sign ordinance, we struggled over the sign ordinance, trying to elevate the city. So, you know, initially when I talked to, um, the attorney and the city manager, you know, I was like, well, let's find a place, right? Let's find a place, let's designate it for food trucks. I think Mr. Anderson's been trying to do this for a long time in the city, you know, let's find a place and let's say, here's where you can go and here's the rules and, and which in my mind, what we're talking about here is like a stopgap. It's something that we can put into place quickly, but it's not the final answer for the city, I don't believe. I think, you know, like before, you know, right now, we had no food trucks. Now we've got 10 food trucks. Before we have 100 food trucks, like let's, let's put some rules on it. I thousand percent agree with Ms. Bartman and Councilmember Trace that, you know, the conditional use needs to be clearly written out. I don't want someone to come spend $900 and then, you know, they don't meet the conditions and they can't, they can't, you know, I don't want someone to waste $900 for sure. I think, you know, it clearly needs to be written in the process. But to me, in my mind, I think this is, we, you know, we put this in place and then we, you know, I think Representative Hawkins had said at our last meeting that he was going to work on the ordinances and things in Tallahassee. I believe he already had committed to that. I know you said you were going to ask, but he had already committed to that. So to me, I think we put this in place, but we keep having a conversation and we, and we keep, you know, moving forward and trying to, you know, kind of come up with a more elegant solution. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do want to point out, we do have a draft letter to Mr. Hawkins. We had met with him via Zoom the other day and he requested a, a letter from the city council and Mr. Manzares has drafted that. I have a copy here. It's asking for clarification and his assistance to clarify this issue at a state level.
Thank you.
Do you have five copies? Do you have copies?
No, I don't. I, I'll shoot it to you.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to food trucks. I'm just opposed to food trucks without guidelines. I certainly like the idea that, I think Councilmember Trace talked about having some kind of strategy that we can come up to work alongside people that are trying to make a living and come up with some kind of strategic idea for a small business incubator location. And there, there's got to be some kind of strategy we can reach that accommodates this, what the state is trying to mandate and what people here are trying to do. But you can't do it if you don't have any kind of conditional use whatsoever. And so I, I think we certainly have to move forward and, uh, and then we're going to have to define exactly what we're talking about and where this is located at. But I think we need to do it, how can we do this in a way that, you know, benefits these individuals that are wanting to make this business a go and to try and, you know, eke out some kind of living and hopefully do what Mr. Barber has done, you know, move on to, you know, establish the business that is a brick and mortar and, and generates incredible success and contribution to the community. And so I just think there's got to be a way we can work this thing out. And I think we can. I, I believe this is the first step of us trying to do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask if I can get consensus that we will move forward in looking at a, as you mentioned, incubator site concept or, because you've been talking about it, but I'm not sure if you're asking us to go look at that.
I think we have consensus on that. You're going to bring back recommendations, right?
Well, if, if private industry doesn't come up with it, then we can look in, into it or allowing it on city, you know, certain city facilities or whatever, just brainstorm and, and think through it, but.
We will look at it and give a recommendation.
Are you talking about location too?
Right. Looking, finding a, a centralized or stable location that they can congregate at and be part of a program, not just simply there in perpetuity, but have some criteria like a graduation program. You're there for a year or six months or whatever, and then, you know, you move out and somebody else comes in so that it's not, you know, permanent. So you have others get that opportunity and then be able to move on to a brick and mortar. I mean, that was kind of the intent.
Right. But you're thinking about putting them all in one place?
Yes.
Okay. Not, not on 192?
We will find, give some recommendations.
Okay.
That'll be a decision we'll have to make later, right?
Pardon me?
We just need to move forward as fast as possible to try and reach a, a viable solution. Any other discussion?
I guess, Mr. Manzares, thank you. Mr. Manzares, I guess then the legality of inspecting the mobile, uh, facilities that you would run that down and come up with?
We'll do our best, sir. We'll do our best to try to get an answer to that.
And get a list and then we can hand that out to all the food vendors and once we get it and there would be an, an inspection, there would be a charge, I assume, and they're going to have to pay that $900, I would assume.
As part of this process, we will, we will, every city code that the city, that the city can enforce, that's not preempted by the state, we certainly will work to enforce. But I can't tell you how far the preemption goes because that's the confusing part of the bill.
All right.
The only, the only problem I had was, was making sure that everybody would be on the same level field, would pay the same kind of impact fees or not impact fees, but their fees every year that a brick and mortar store would pay. In other words, to the city and the state and the county and everything else would be, can we, can we get evened out on the same plane so that somebody's not upset at a brick and a mortar store? I'm, I'm paying for everything and they, they just come in and they don't have to pay anything. Can we kind of?
To extent we can, but that can be very difficult because the uses associated with these mobile food vending units are much different than brick and mortar. And so whether you can, we can do it, for example, they do not have connection, connections to water and sewer to them, so they're not paying any fees associated with that impact fee or even connection fees. They're not paying utility fees. They're not paying electricity, they may be paying electricity, but they're not connected to utilities, at least some of these shouldn't because as Mr. Anderson pointed out, they're supposed to be self-contained when it comes to utilities, so.
They cannot pay, they can't connect electricity either.
They can't connect electricity, so they're not paying utilities. So it really, all we would be looking at, assuming we, the city can't do a fire fee associated with an inspection, would be the BTR. And as we've always done with BTRs, they're done based on classifications and we put it in a classification, probably similar to that. And so they probably would be paying a pretty, pretty similar.
And that's a, a set fee.
Yeah. And that's a set fee they pay once a year, so that everybody.
Just level out the playing field for as much as you can. That's where I'm coming from. I understand the water sewer you don't have. I got that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Councilman Trace?
So in an effort to, um, create the allowance for this and not the outright prohibition, which is the current way it is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading introduction for ordinance 2021-08 for the allowance of food trucks as a conditional use in highway business district.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Court?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Aye for the first reading until I see what you've got to me.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Matt Carries?
And I forgot to mention this in there, and bringing back specific regulations as part of the conditional use in the next reading.
Yes, sir. We, we got that, yes.
That's not a problem. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we come to our council action. There are no council action items at this time. Mr. Manzares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have several items. First off, in front of you, I placed the draft legislative priorities for 2021 and wanted to see if there was any opposition to that. That did include assistance from Representative Hawkins, as I told you in that letter, to clarify the preemption from the state legislature in that law.
I do have, I do have a comment. So on, on the aquatic weed control, Lake Tahoe East and West, question mark, I mean, is that?
Yeah. I apologize for that, a typo. It's just, uh, we want to maintain funding for the weed control. That's always been something that O A puts as a secondary. So I just want to keep that flowing, make sure they don't pull any funding for that aquatic weed control. And I have put East and West, but I, I was questioning, do we need to do, worry about what they're doing in Kissimmee?
And this is dihydrola?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I like the Lake Renne Mead one, on the not requiring advertisement of public announcements meetings. I didn't know we had that in there before. I don't support that. I think it's, at least a minimum, we have to put it in the newspaper and all that, and post it.
And I reviewed this with our lobbyist, and he recommended that's something we might want to support. A lot of cities are doing that, but I understand your point.
Is that, that's for, that's to refer to the bills that have been out there that don't require publication in the newspaper, but allow for electronic notice?
Correct.
But that's public hearing type items, land use changes and all that?
Yes, sir.
The advertisement of that is part of the application fee, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So it's paid for by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, those bills in the past have been, have been, as I understand it, they have been presented by essentially the applicants, because they do know, because of the publication costs associated with that, and the fact that they are, they want the legislature to allow for basically digital advertising, online stuff.
Call me old fashioned, I still read the Gazette, and I get the Sentinel, and I actually look at the public notice areas, so I actually find out things before I know about them, for things that are coming on our agenda. I actually see it in the newspaper and look it up beforehand, so.
Well, you're older than, you're younger than me, so I'm not gonna call you old fashioned.
Dan reads the paper every day.
I read the paper every single day, that's true.
Council, you want me to strike that?
Yeah.
It is striking.
And then, another question. So, as part of priority setting for our federal and state lobbyists, I can see the pending grain applications, especially because they're state grants, being our state lobbyist priority. Do we want to try to have the AWS Cypress Lake project be a federal lobbyist priority, or try to get federal grants, or anything to help out with that?
Do we, are we spearheading the alternative water supply grant opportunity? I thought the Water Coalition spearheads that, and Lake Tahoe Water Authority, not us?
They are, because of stopper, but we still want to make sure that our lobbyists, when they have that opportunity in front of those legislatures, to make sure they put...
Okay. I'm not, I got a two-hour lesson from our utility department on all that, all the changes along with stopper. I just didn't know if that's something we could push on the state level, or if it should be a federal level item.
I actually just introduced our utilities director to our federal lobbyists, and talk about, is it Wiffy? We're gonna talk about different things next week with our federal lobbyists.
It's Wiffy.
Wiffy, thank you. So, yes.
I sent you that PowerPoint on that.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
So, we have one, two, three, four, five, an initial, and then three, three with the description. So we have, is this eight total things that we put on, like a flyer for legislators, or is it? Like, I see three with a lot of backup, and then four or five that have just?
My plan is to do the same thing, is provide a handout, even though we can't go this year, is to, then we put a nice flyer together for our ask.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the flyer last year was very professionally done. I thought, put something in their hand, I thought that was excellent. Any other comment? Go ahead, Mr. Sturgeon.
The next thing is, I have in front of me is the letter concerning the EPG. As you know, we've had challenges with that. A little bit about the EPG, it was set up by county ordinance, and it was designed for hurricane response. And as the mayor and I know, and if you've seen the minutes, and some of the controversy it's caused, I think it's time to go back and readdress that, and I'm just asking for your endorsement to do that. I provided that letter, that again, Mr. Manzares assisted me drafting.
I think it's very important, and it's been discussed among a lot of the elected officials, that these changes all be made, so that there's a balance, a better balance as decisions are made between the cities and the county and the school board. And I think this goes to that end of accomplishing that objective, and I think we certainly all support it. Any other comment? So, we have a consensus to support this letter? Thank you.
And we ask a specific direction, is okay with the mayor to send the letter, because as you know, the school board has sent a letter, and the chairman and the school board have sent a similar letter, so we'd like it to come from the mayor.
Good. I thought we were first, but okay.
Do I have your permission? Thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
I'm good, thank you. I'm good, thank you.
I didn't hear you.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Cooper?
Mr. Sturgeon, can you tell me about Mr. Puffinball, and the road moving 20 feet or something to widen it, so they can have the turn lanes out there?
Would... I'm sorry, I'm looking anyway. I'm not familiar with that issue. Oh, Andre?
Andre, I should have asked you, Andre, I'm sorry. I should have asked you.
Sorry, I wasn't in that meeting.
You're referring to the Puffinball property on 192 and by Narcoose?
Yes, sir.
And so, Mr. Puffinball had submitted an application for annexation to the city, and we approved that, and he is in the process of selling that property. He's selling it to a investor who is wanting to develop that property for a shopping center. Adjacent to that property is a 20-foot driveway that went to a property formerly owned by Mr. Lockry. At the time that the Thompson Grove development, which is further to the east of that, was coming through, there was several attempts made by Mr. Thompson to get easement across that driveway, and was unsuccessful. Mister, the proposed purchaser of the Puffinball property was able to purchase the Lockry property, and now has full access to that driveway. So, the challenge with crossing that driveway is no longer an issue. If I could step back one moment, when Mr. Thompson was moving forward with his project, the turn lane heading west, left turn lane to go into this property, DOT only approved access for the driveway at the time Thompson Grove was not ready for development. So, Mr. Thompson contacted DOT to get assistance in adjusting the median opening, so that he could also have a turn from that same left turn lane into his property. DOT required that the driveways be separated by at least 40 feet. So, you recall, I brought it for, to you, to change that plan, so it has this kind of odd angle turn, so that will be a 40-foot separation from the driveway, from Mr., previously Mr. Lockry's property, and this other property. So, subsequent to that, the driveway was purchased, so now it's no longer an issue. So, they want to go back to the original design, to have one single driveway shared by both properties. We have been in discussions with them, trying to do that. However, the purchaser of the Thompson Grove property, Dr. Horton, is not willing to go back to the original design. They're concerned about being held up, so they can move forward with their permitting, because they already begun construction of that roadway. So, that's where we are. And Mr. Puffinball is concerned and wants to be able to get some assistance from the city as to how we move forward. We offer to speak with Dr. Horton, to see whether or not they would be willing to bring the driveway back to the original configuration that you had approved, and to allow for a dual driveway, because what will happen is you'll end up with two separate driveways off of 192. Granted, it already exists, because they already have the 20-foot driveway, and they already have the 40-foot driveway for the Thompson Grove property. So, that's kind of where we are. It's kind of a little bit of a mess.
But they only need to move it, what, 20 feet or so?
Potentially, only need to move it 20 feet, so that the 20-foot driveway would be part of that and create a single driveway. And again, it's a matter of, Dr. Horton has already signed an easement agreement, and if Thompson Grove changes that, he is subject to lawsuit, is what his attorney advised him, that if he was to do anything, he would set himself for a possible lawsuit.
So, the city couldn't work with Dr. Horton, and get this speeding, speed it up?
That is my intent. I spoke with Mr. Thompson yesterday, and got contact names of the VP at Dr. Horton, and I'm going to have conversations with him tomorrow to talk about it.
Okay. Well, I just heard that Mr. Puffinball's getting, a customer that was getting ready to purchase the property was getting a little antsy, and he's, they're gonna back off and lose his property?
No. In fact, the purchaser of the property, there's no restrictions on his ability to get a curb cut, because that roadway that's going to be built is going to be owned by the city. So, it's not being controlled by DOT, so he has the ability to show on his site, though, in plan, the curb cuts of where he wants the cross-access from Thompson Grove to Puffinball. In other words, we encourage cross-access, so we would support a curb cut on that roadway that would, or the drive that would come off of 192. So, there's no restriction. He has, he seems to have been misinformed, and it's my understanding that Mr. Thompson has already spoken with Mr. Puffinball earlier today about that matter.
You got back to him, okay. That was my question, had you gotten back to everybody
I did.
involved, and you're getting to it. I appreciate that. So, yeah. You think that the curb cut will work, and?
The curb cut is not a problem. What might be a challenge is whether DOT will allow them to move 20 feet back. That's the issue, because we don't control what DOT decides.
Right.
But we still need to get Dr. Horton's concurrence before Mr. Thompson can approach DOT. That's why I'm trying to have the conversation, to clear that path, and then move them forward.
But how, how, okay, so the Puffinball buyer that's wanting to buy the property, they're okay? Have you talked to them?
I have not spoken to them recently, within the past week, but I spoke to both Mr. Puffinball and Mr. Thompson yesterday.
Okay. And everything's looked like it's meshing and starting to work now, or?
Well, they now have a better understanding of that there is no limitations or restrictions on him getting a curb cut to his property. But there is still that additional issue of the access from 192, whether it would be a curved road or a straight road.
I got you. I got you. And that will be between Mr. Puffinball and his?
No, that would be between DOT and Mr. Thompson, yes.
Excuse me, you're right, yeah. Okay, got you covered. Okay, that, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Anderson, can I ask you a follow-up question? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Cooper. When we, when we approved that Thompson Grove's, and I'm trying to follow your description all in my mind, I wasn't involved in any of these conversations, but I know we were trying to interconnect the Puffinball piece with Thompson, but we also, based on the community all coming out here from Live Oak, we didn't want to connect into Live Oak, so that's still not happening, right?
Right. It will be a cross-access for the commercial pieces, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to double-check that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't Puffinball's piece have connection to Live Oak? So, it would connect all the way through?
Not based, you weren't on council, I don't think, when we went through this with the community.
But that commercial piece has access to Live Oak. There's currently a curb cut there, coming out of 7-Eleven.
But I believe, but I believe we said, we didn't want them to connect through to that, and I thought it was agreed upon, that Mr. Puffinball didn't want to connect in through Live Oak, if he could get the connection to Thompson.
I don't think his property has restrictions on it, though, to not connect to Live Oak.
We haven't approved his construction plans. We've approved the annexation, zoning, and future land use. We don't, we haven't seen a site plan at this point.
So, you can, at that point, tell him he can't connect to a public road that's right next to him?
That was my question. Can you get everything meshed out with everybody, so it'll work out?
But I think that's a different issue than what Ms. Matheny is asking.
I just want to make sure our previous, our previous commitments, I don't know what, I don't know what all shaking and baking behind the scenes, I just want to make sure our previous commitments aren't being thrown out.
We'll check, we'll check the records and make sure.
If it's part of the approval, then it'll have, it'll remain in place.
Bill, can you stay with that, and get that done pretty quick?
I'm just trying to figure out why, where this came from. I'm just trying to figure out where this came from. Did Mr. Puffinball, or Mr. Leonard Thompson come to you?
Yes.
And they already knew we were working on this. I'm a little confused why they involve council, which is their right, but, and we're working on it already. I'm just getting a little confused.
Well, you and I are already talking, I think I even mentioned, if you did, no, I'm sorry.
I don't remember. You may have.
I thought you had a little...
I'm just trying to figure out, we're already, and staff's already engaged in this, and on top of it, I was just trying to figure out if we're missing something, if they had a complaint, you know?
I just don't want to lose a sale, or somebody, get it done.
No, I clearly understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, connect the dots here, you know?
Commercial, we want commercial development. Let's not lose this thing. That's where I'm trying to say, mesh, the two of you get together and let's get it done quickly, that you can talk to everybody, including, you know, in those two or three subdivisions back there. Get it all done. Mr. Sturgeon, can you tell me about, you and I talked about that again, Deer Creek and Canoe Creek Road, putting a light? Last time we talked, I think we all said, I think most of the council members said, we need to get a light there, even a temporary light there.
So, Mr. Gandoor's been working with the county. I have an update from him, from Tuesday, January 26. The issue has been addressed by the County Transportation Engineering Department, and they obviously determined the need to address the traffic flow at the intersection. The county is assessing the options to determine which will provide the better flow for Canoe, Deer Creek community and the Canoe Creek corridor. The county would not place a temporary light at the intersection, it will incorporate traffic light into their upcoming capital project budget. The cost for the signalized intersection is $400,000 to $500,000, one-year design build. The cost of a temporary portable traffic light, city-funded, and we talked about the city doing it, is $200,000 per year, and will require county permission, and may place the city in a legal predicament. The cost does not incorporate repair replacement costs if there's any damage. And Mr. Cooper and I have talked about that, and, you know, I can't support us spending city money on a county road, and then taking on liability if there's a crash, or, as Mr. Manzares taught me, it's more about when we take it down, and it doesn't go properly, then we're going to be in a risk situation.
But you've got a Canoe Creek Road in Deer Run, or right there where it's at. You've got city, yeah, you've got a county road, but you've got the city right there. We've got some kind of a standing, we ought to try and help those people out. There's 500 or 600 cars that are coming there every day, in a two-lane road, and they're having to, on that two-lane road, it's so over, overwhelmed at times, that it's 45 minutes to get one car to go out there. Hopefully, somebody will slow down or stop and let them do that. So, I just, you know, trying to help the citizens to try and get some traffic lights that we need out there, and I thought maybe we could just rent a temporary light out there, and see how much better it's gonna be, for six months to a year, a couple $300,000. That's cheap, if you're gonna be able to ingress, ingress, and egress right there at that 500, 600 homes there. That's just a question. Question to all the council members.
I want to move forward with the light. We're putting one in at Fires Cove Lane, aren't we? On a county road, put in by the city, maintained by the city?
That's an emergency signal, just for fire, to get out onto the road, for emergency response.
I am perfectly fine putting in the light. We need to put in a light at Deer Creek.
So, if I can make a recommendation, I'd rather take that $200,000 of council directs, and put that towards the purchase of the light, instead of putting temporary in there.
All right. I'll make a motion, and we go ahead and put that light there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the county is saying they're gonna put it in their CIP?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they say, like, when it would be in their CIP?
They did not.
Because I guess my thought is?
I'll pay. I'll pay half.
What if we give them half, or we give them $200,000? Does that move it up in their, in their system?
This is Naseem Gendora, Public Works Director. Speaking specifically, our last conversations with the county, we did reach out to the county this week to follow up. In regards to the particular Deer Creek Road and Canoe Creek Road, the county stated that there is a item that, excuse me, there's a concern that they're going to follow up on. It didn't specifically say that the solution would be a traffic light because they were still considering the full picture of Canoe Creek Road, especially with the potential upcoming of a Canoe Creek Road widening project that would also put an impact onto it. So what they would do is, they would go out there, reassess it to see if they can determine if there's a an alternative solution that could provide some relief to the community but also relief throughout the corridor. Traffic lights aren't always an answer. I mean, they're usually the answer that you see that's more visible. There's other methods in order to address certain issues. And the biggest concern that I know that, you know, that we have as engineers and as also the county does reflect is, you know, what impact would placing a light at a particular intersection, the impacts that it would have throughout the whole corridor, like, on that. So that's what they're following up on that. So we are continuing to work with the county to ensure the solutions that are being presented are going to be solutions not just to serve one particular community but also, but particularly the whole corridor, and also reaching out to them to see about long-term solutions and also short-term solutions. And of course, being more willing to work with them with the short-term solutions. If the long-term solution, for example, the widening of Canoe Creek Road, is going to pose, is going to create, for example, a traffic light or any other solution to be further down the road as well.
But you're still, you're looking at three to five, six years before that is going to be four-laned or at least. And we've got citizens right there, there's five, 600 homes there. We need to help them. I mean, we need to help them now. That's not going three or five, six, seven years down the road. That's ridiculous. We're in the city. We've got a county road. Let's just spend the money. We, Mr. Sturgeon, you and I talked about it. You said you've got more than money you don't know what to do with.
I didn't think I said it like that.
Maybe not, maybe not exactly, but let's get to it. You've got plenty of money that you could be able to put this?
Yes, and as you know, we're doing the interlocal agreement, which will be presented to this body soon for the PD&E for widening of the Canoe Creek Road. So again, I go back to my suggestion or recommendation that we approach the county and say, "Well, give them a portion of the money to see if they'll move us up the list." I just asked Mr. Manzera, said, "Is there a potential we can use mobility fees or transportation impact fees?" So I'll start there, half, and see what they'll do. We'll reach out and do that.
Well, I certainly think you've got the support of the council in doing that, do you not?
Yeah. What's that?
Go negotiate. Put your skills to work.
Well, Mr. Gendor just said they don't know that the signal is the,
The answer.
Is the answer, but.
Exactly, and the county has a transportation department, obviously very well capable to come up with solutions and so forth. And like I said, we're more willing to act as partners with them in order to determine, you know, long-term solutions and definitely encourage them to push forward with short-term solutions.
I'll reach out to the county manager.
Perfect.
I'll escalate it to the county manager's office.
The other council members, then, what do you feel is, would 50-50 split with the county and get the, in there? And if that doesn't work, then let's just go ahead and bite the bullet and say, "We'll do it and put it in there."
I'm fine leaving it up to staff to negotiate that. I just,
Let's move forward and at least get something.
I want, I want a solution done. Someone died at Canoe Creek and Deer Run. That's why that light got put in. Someone died at Stroop and Neptune. That's why that road got cut off. Like, I don't want that situation of someone getting an accident and dying at that intersection. We're just talking about it.
You had two of us that want to get something done pretty quick. Not talking about two or three, four years down the road. So whatever else we need to get.
That's clear.
How do you move forward?
I will begin tomorrow making those phone calls.
Okay. And you can holler back at me and let me know. I'd appreciate it.
I will. I'll let the council know, yes, sir. Thank you, Naseem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I had asked a question earlier with the, at the lakefront here, to getting the cleaning up and the burn stuff. If we, if we can see how much money it would cost us to get that picked up? I mean, what's burned is there, laying there. It's just dead, leftover, that's going to go to the bottom. And we're worried about, you know, that other places has got the same thing. And we're going to have it right here in front of our own front door. So if we don't get it cleaned up and picked up where it's dead, you're going to have a problem.
I got direction for that also. We'll take care of that. We'll look at it.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to Councilman Braskew. He's here tonight on his anniversary.
Now I feel bad for keeping him here late.
Sure. Congratulations or condolences, I don't know.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Braskew, what do you have for us?
I'm good. 26 years married, but other than that, great discussion tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations, man. Councilman Martini?
Thank you. I have two quick things. One, Mr. Trace probably sees this as well. Avatar Car Wash, quite frequently, they have such a line to go into the car wash that they are parked out on Neptune Road. You know, coming home from work and there's three, four cars just parked in the right turn lane, you know, when you need to merge and all that to wait to get into Avatar. I mean, can we, as the city, go and talk to them and say, "You're going to have to reconfigure your access because you cannot have cars dead stopped out on the road"?
And it's going to get worse when that section of Neptune gets widened and that's an actual lane, not a merge.
They need to work on their circulation. I just, you know, it's dangerous. They're just, like, stopped out in the road. I'm glad they're that busy, but they need to have a better circulation pattern and.
And I think they got bought out by,
They did.
Yeah, so I think it might be an operational thing, too, of.
It's been going on for a long time, but I just, you know, it's just getting worse and.
We'll have to, we'll look into it.
I just don't know if there's a way to, you know, look at operationally and circulation or they need to do something, but yeah, it's very dangerous when you can't, you don't have the merge lane because cars are parked in it.
Well, we can look, we can look into it creatively thinking the, if they're stacking vehicles in the public right-of-way, they're actually using the public right-of-way as part of their business operation, which is a violation of the code. So, you know, so we can probably
Right.
Work with them a little bit.
Yeah, it's unfortunate the way the site's laid out. It's like right where you turn in is where they're queuing. So you get five cars and then the rest are sitting out on the road. So that was one. The second one, I want to ask the council members something. So I don't know if you've noticed, Mr. Braskew's probably noticed this, the new crosswalks that have been put in down on Lake Shore with the flashing lights. They're great. There's eight crosswalks, though, and we only did four. So, and I know we haven't done the thermo yet, but they've been waiting on some temperature issues and seeing how we're in winter here. But I would like to see us, and I know, like, ultimately, we've got the Lake Shore master plan and everything's going to change. However, that's years down the road. I don't know when that's going to happen. I would personally like to see all eight of them have the same treatment. And I did find out what the four were. It was $80,000. So to do the other four, we would need to find $80,000. I just think, you know, I drive the lakefront a lot in the morning, and it's hard to see people, and I'm looking for people, and, you know, you just see legs breaking headlights, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, there's somebody there." And now we've done half of them with this additional feature. I just think that's even going to be more dangerous because people are going to be expecting lights, and we don't have it. So just wanted to know if the other council members would support the county manager finding this $80,000 and in our budget and doing all eight of the crosswalks?
My question is, is does that, does that slow the traffic down, having the additional lights there?
It slows it down, I can tell you, it does.
It lets you see that there's somebody waiting, you know, like, people on the, people on Lake Shore just ignore the pedestrians and at least, you know, lights and flashes. I mean, I personally would like to see it on all eight and.
If it helps to slow the traffic down, it'd be.
Yeah, because there's one, we walk New York every morning, and that's the one that doesn't have a flash.
Right.
And that's the one we're always like, whoa.
Yeah.
Because you'd expect them that they're going to stop, but they didn't.
It is part of our new strategic plan, the walkability, so it fits into that very nicely. And again, I will defer to Dan. I think we can use mobility fees for that.
We can confirm that, but we certainly can look forward.
Yeah, so we got, I got two other people saying, okay.
We'll work towards it.
You got direction.
I got three.
Can I add, Hunter? So I also noticed this morning that some have a crosswalk with no sidewalk on the other side. I mean, they have to put a pad, a landing area. Is the plan that we're going to do crosswalks all the way down Lake Shore? Is this the future of that, or? It's only picked out in a certain location, but some are really far from the next one. I don't see people walking down. It's what?
Crosswalks to nowhere.
I think ultimately it'll be captured, you know, in this best foot forward in the master plan.
Right.
I just was trying to make it more safe in the three years or four years we're going to have before that gets into place.
Yeah.
So, I'm scared. I can't talk into this thing tonight, but I'll add it to the budget amendment for March.
Okay.
And I think Naseem already knows who to go get the supplies from.
Great.
We'll see if we can get it on track quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Last one question. Mr. Sturgeon, I talked to John Moody this afternoon, and we were talking about Florida Avenue. And I understand when that inception comes in and starts, he tells me between Florida Avenue to Pennsylvania Avenue on 10th Street, the walkability that's going to be widened, so then there's no parking going to be between Florida Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. There's no parking going to be in front of the movie theater or coming to Florida Avenue. The drawings that he's telling me, have you seen that, or?
No, I'll have to look at that.
Does your Andre know about that, or? He's sitting there hiding. Do you know anything about that, or?
Well, if I could say, and I don't want to cut, come on up, Andre.
Because somebody said something about there's not going to be any, from Florida Avenue to Pennsylvania Avenue on 10th Street, there's no parking going to be there because you're going to widen the sidewalks?
So that is part of Phase Two of the downtown revitalization, and I do not recall what that cross-section looks like as far as parking. But as the city manager said, we will look at the plan and get back to you with a definite answer.
Because there is a lot easier to go to 9th Street and do it, and what you're talking about, than there is on 10th Street, and you don't have enough parking there now.
Yeah, so this would be part of a bigger plan where we're going to be looking at a parking study for the downtown and to address parking concerns that have been raised.
I just was worried about Florida Avenue from 10th to Lake Shore and you get started and get halfway done, and you're going to say, "Wait a minute, now we can't put parking on 10th Street there for that one block." Wait a minute, we forgot to think about that, and that's, that was a question of, you're going to, considering 9th Street, to do it there, cross there?
Again.
Instead of 10th Street, or no?
Again, I can't give you an answer right now because I don't have the plans in front of me. But we will look at it and get back to you with an answer.
Okay, all right. As long as you can do that. I just don't want to be too late, too much problems down the road.
Understood.
Thank you, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to commend the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce for their special business after-hours last evening. It was pretty encouraging to go down and to see all the streets filled and new shops opened and so many people checking in the new shops. And I just want to commend them on that event. I thought it was an excellent event. With that, we come to our information and reports section. Thursday, February 4th, there'll be a CRA agency meeting at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. Thursday, February 11th, there'll be a city council meeting at 6:30 PM at the Community Center. Thursday, February 18th, there'll be a city council workshop at 6:00 PM, also here at the Community Center. I'd like to remind our folks that warrant list number four report is available for your review. There are no other items on our agenda. With that, we'll call this meeting to a close. We are adjourned.